You may think plastic bags can be recycled curbside, but they can't. When you put recyclables in a plastic bag, it gets tangled in the sorting machine and ruins recycling. Let's all properly recycle.
Let's all properly recycle. Let's all properly recycle. Let's all properly recycle. Leave out the plastic bags.
So let's say that Tim here was returning to his vehicle only to find it missing. He may think it was either stolen or towed. Let's not worry too much, Tim. Hillsborough County wants you to know the rules and regulations should you find yourself stuck in this unfortunate situation. Here are a few rules and tips you should know. Rule number one: Permission to tow. Towing services need permission to tow from private property and must post signs with telephone numbers saying that the trespassing vehicles will be removed. If your vehicle is missing, look for a sign and call the number. Rule number two: Communication. As soon as your vehicle is delivered to the local towing facility, towing services must notify local law enforcement within a 30-minute timeframe. And they must return calls from vehicle owners within one hour. Helpful tip number one: Law enforcement can help motorists determine if their vehicle has been towed. If you don't see a posted sign, call the authorities on the non-emergency line. Rule number three: Retrieving your vehicle during a tow. Most people are unaware that you can still retrieve your vehicle while connected to the tow truck. For a drop fee of no more than half the towing rate, the tow truck operator must release the vehicle to its owner. When it comes to payment, tow truck drivers must accept the following: debit, cash, cashier's check, or money order. Rule number four: Personal property. If the owner is unable to pay the drop fee and their vehicle is in the hands of the towing company, owners still have the right to retrieve personal property from their vehicle. Helpful tip number two: Having a registration and title in your name will make it easier to recover your vehicle. Tow companies will not hand over the vehicle if you are not the registered owner, unless you have an original notarized affidavit signed by the registered vehicle owner. Remember, Hillsborough County is here to help you. For complete detailed information on towing rules and regulations, please visit us at
Welcome to a meeting of your planning commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the August 12, 2019 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending the meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on agenda items, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment signing sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with the process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the planning commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Marina to lead us in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. All rise.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with praise for your mighty power and guidance. We thank you for this day and thank you too for the many blessings in our lives, for our great country, and for the opportunity to live in freedom. We ask your blessings on our leaders and we ask that you give each one of us here today the wisdom to make the right choices so that our decisions will be in the best interests of the people of Hillsborough County. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Marina. Roll call, please.
All right. Powell? Dix? Green? Joseph? All right. Cress? Marino? Wilman? Thrower?
Here.
Wilds? Dickerson? Rodriguez? Doughty.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we do have a quorum. Next up on our agenda is approval of the Planning Commission's regular meeting minutes from July 22 and the Hillsborough County Plan Amendment Public Hearing from July 22, 2019. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Nigel, second by Commissioner Marina. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor of the minutes as written? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Next up is public input. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any items that are not on our agenda today? If so, please step forward and state your name and address. Okay, no public comment? We're going to move on to item number three. It's a presentation, public transit and shared mobility design and policy guidance. Jay Collins, welcome.
Thanks, sir. Good afternoon, Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. Staff is happy to be here today to welcome Dennis Smith, Planner in Residence at FSU's Department of Urban and Regional Planning, as well as Jeremy Crute, Senior Planner, same with FSU's Department of Urban and Regional Planning. Today, they will have a presentation on urban design for shared mobility. This is in partnership with the Planning Commission, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, as well as the Florida Department of Transportation. They, along with a group of graduate students, have been conducting a capstone project for the past couple of months, looking at some various contexts here in Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa, as well as Tallahassee, basically looking at those ideas of technology and mobility, whether they are Uber, whether they are scooters, whether they are public transit such as buses. And so with that, I would like to welcome Dennis and Jeremy to the podium. Thank you.
My name's Dennis Smith. I live in Tallahassee, 1136 Maple Drive. I'm with Florida State University. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the progress on our report. Some of you met me when I was here last time, a couple of months ago. Actually, we were here twice to address the commission. And what I'd like to do is provide you an update on where the students are with their project. You all should have received a draft of the report to take a look at. You're encouraged to do so if you'd like to. And it provides, I would say probably, an 80% picture of where we are with the overall project. Let me start out with my first slide, so if I can move us forward here. As you may remember, we were charged with looking at shared mobility and its ramifications for urban design here in the Tampa Bay area. And in order to do that, we looked at a couple of different sites throughout Hillsborough County. But the big question is, what is shared mobility? For the purposes of our study, it was really the whole ecosystem of transportation. It was the shared was more of the sharing the resources of transportation, the network, and how we can get our various modes to coordinate and to do so in an efficient manner. So I think we think of shared mobility traditionally as buses, perhaps your trolley system. Shared mobility, of course, can mean TNCs like Lyft and Uber, traditional cab companies. But we've really extended it to include all of those methods of getting around, including private vehicles and even scooters. So it's part of a way of looking, right, I think I saw some looks there. Even scooters, right. But it's a shared resource, our landscape, and in order to provide access, we need to be accommodating of various modes and really anticipating changes. So let me talk a little bit about our scope of work. We were asked to really accomplish four tasks within the scope of work. Do a deep dive on literature and take a look at what's out there, what's happening in other communities, not just here in Florida, nationally, but globally, with sharing this technology. I mean, how are we accommodating all these different assets simultaneously and doing so in an organized and planned fashion? And we got some really good information for that in the report. We also wanted to take a look at your plans, the plans from the municipalities within Hillsborough County, the county comp plan, land development regulations, to identify any policies or regulations that really help to facilitate shared mobility, and then alternatively, any kind of policies that we might have in place that are barriers to promoting shared mobility. And so we did a deep dive on that here and tried to make it as specific as possible by looking at your plans. We then, the third task of the project was to develop some implementation guidance. You'll see kind of the first step of that in this report. The implementation guidance is looking at changes to policy to make this shared mobility future more reasonable, more accessible. It's also looking at funding sources, and we've done a lot of research on funding sources. The third component that you asked us to take a look at in this project was order of magnitude costs for some of these design measures. And we are still working on that, but we'll have that ready for the final report. The final report is due in October, but will be wrapped up quite a bit earlier than that. Once we get your feedback from some of the material we've given you today to look at, we should be able to wrap that up. The budget for this project was $34,000. You know, we're a public institution, FSU, so really, I mean, all of our costs went to supporting the salaries of faculty and staff and then bringing the students down here. So we're really excited to have had that opportunity and are very grateful for the funding of the project. The project was also married up with work that we did with the Florida Department of Transportation. The DOT was very interested in Melissa's concept and the fact that we were working on this, and they said, hey, while you're out in Tampa doing this work, could you do some of this work around Tallahassee as well? And so they provided us with a little bit of extra funding to bring that home. Let me talk about one of the first and most important parts of the project, and that was engaging the public. The students worked pretty extensively, both in Tallahassee and here, querying people about shared mobility, about their interests, their thoughts about design. They went to the various locations around Hillsborough County in which we did our shared design guidance, our actual designs, templates. And we also had meetings. We had a meeting here in this building, and we had a meeting up at the Davis Library. I think that's the name of it. It's kind of, pardon me? Austin Davis Library. So yeah, the Davis Library. And just had a lot of good input. We provided anyone who attended, which included experts and residents, with maps to draw on and really provide us with their insights. And so we think that the engagement piece was really essential in us understanding what people liked, didn't like, what they were apprehensive about as far as the future of transportation, but also getting some really good ideas from people. Our literature review, our research, and our interaction with the public allowed us to kind of coalesce five design principles. The students refer to them as the five As. They don't all start with an A, but I'll walk you through them. The first A is "all for all people." And the concept is that design should be approachable and usable for someone who's eight years old or 80 years old. Gil Penalosa, the planner, who does a lot of urban design internationally and here in the United States, has this idea that if we can design something that an eight-year-old could use or an 80-year-old can use, everyone in between can use that, and has a very long life cycle as well for our communities. So A for all people. Aesthetic, and this is a very important consideration that I brought to the students and said I'm very interested in, and that is, we need to make things look beautiful. Hillsborough County's done a great job at that, at least in the last decade or so. Maybe when I was younger, it was less that way. But the aesthetic of really making our urban design look beautiful and inviting, like Riverwalk and some of those things, there's no reason why we shouldn't implement that in our design standards. Access, making sure that what we've designed is accessible to all people regardless of ability. We have this idea of adaptability, and that is really integrating different modes of transportation. And then accommodation, which is technological accommodation, making sure that we're really future-leaning. We have a nice description of these five terms in the report for you, so you can catch up on them. But the idea was that these five As would find their way into all of the designs that we did for you. And so our context areas, we picked four here, and there were four analogous, kind of analogous, areas in North Florida. But we wanted to do a downtown area, an urban stadium, a suburban shopping mall, and some type of a rural or suburban destination or interaction area. And so what we ended up with here in Hillsborough County was the West River Development Area. I mean, there's so much going on there now that while we had thought about some other areas that could be urban or downtown, that was almost a tableau rase, a clean slate for us just to jump right into and provide some recommendations for. A lot of good stuff happening out there, and we hope that we can, some of the recommendations in the report might find their way into the design there. We looked at Amelie. Of course, we know that that's always a big challenge for transportation. There are a lot of new transportation options that are finding their way into that mix, including ride share, which can be good or bad, you know? And so the idea was to think through how we could kind of rationalize all the different options of transportation around the stadium. The third was the Citrus Park Mall, and there was some discussion about Citrus Park Mall even becoming a transportation hub for the airport at some point. So we looked at that, some of the RTA aspects of the mall. And then finally, we looked at the Keystone Park and Civic Center area. And there's actually a lot of transportation improvements planned for out there now, or some planned for out there now. And so again, it's an area where there are things happening, so we're hopeful that the designs can fit well in there. And Jeremy, is this the piece where you come up? So Jeremy's going to talk to you a little bit about the areas. I know we have about seven minutes left, so we can go ahead and walk you through the four areas and some of the five As and how they relate to these four design areas.
Good afternoon, and like you said, I'm Jeremy Crute, the Senior Planner over at FSU. And I'm going to try to give you all a quick whirlwind tour of the four context areas that Dennis mentioned and the conceptual designs that our students developed for each of those areas, and ultimately trying to highlight some of the design features that ultimately can hopefully improve mobility through the use of shared modes, as well as to capitalize on all the benefits that shared mobility can provide while mitigating the challenges that are also inherent with a lot of shared mobility modes. So like Dennis mentioned, the first one is the West River Redevelopment Area, which was for our downtown context area. And this one, like Dennis mentioned, was really exciting for us because it did give us more of that blank slate to work with to try to incorporate shared mobility into all aspects of the design from top to bottom. And it was also exciting because it incorporates a senior living facility onsite that kind of gave us the opportunity to try to figure out how to design shared mobility in a way that accommodates all ages and all persons. That's one of the five As that Dennis mentioned, as opposed to only designing for millennials and the younger generations that so often use or more likely to use that. And an idea that some of the, that came from the charrettes that Dennis mentioned was sort of having a shared mobility kiosk available, maybe at the front desk of that living facility that might be able to show a senior citizen how to call an Uber or how to, what the transit lines are in that area and those sorts of things. But with that, I'm going to dive into some of the features. And a common theme that you'll find throughout a lot of these recommendations is the importance of basic pedestrian improvements that support shared modes, because whether it's walking to the bus stop, or it's riding a shared bicycle, or waiting to be picked up by a TNC vehicle, almost all shared modes are accessed by foot. And so good pedestrian design is necessary in almost every context area for these initiatives to be successful. And so even in this context where it is sort of the blank slate, sort of the foundation of providing good mobility through shared modes is having features such as adequate pedestrian-scale lighting and protected bike lanes and sidewalks, and all those common and basic core bicycle pedestrian features that will enable people to be able to actually access the bus or the TNC, Uber, Lyft, or those sorts of things. And in West River's case, they already have all these great brick roads and these street-lined trees, and it already has that foundation to be able to transform these streetscapes to be conducive for all forms of shared mobility. And if we pair that foundation with, say, strategically-placed drop-off and pickup areas for both buses and car sharing and ride sharing, then it could be an effective way to, again, improve people's mobility through the use of those modes. And particularly in dense urban areas like in West River or in the downtown, where congestion is a challenge, having these designated pickup and drop-off areas can really serve to alleviate the potential problems that could be caused by shared vehicles, trying to stop in the middle of the road to let someone off. So allowing them a space to get off the road, to be able to pick up a passenger, drop a passenger off is a big part of ensuring that those congestion problems don't continue to get worse. And often, those can be incorporated into the design, say, simply by maybe repainting the lines of a few shared, not shared, excuse me, on-street parking spaces along the side of the road, or it could also be a lot more infrastructure-heavy investments as well. And so at those same types of drop-off areas, we could also, we also need to ensure that they have a safe and comfortable place to wait to be picked up. And so by incorporating, you know, covered pedestrian waiting areas is an important way, especially here in Florida, where oftentimes the weather is either really, really hot or downpour, having a comfortable place to build a wait for these modes will actually encourage people to begin using these additional modes. However, passengers aren't the only concern with these emerging mobility trends, and a common concern of the participants within our charrettes and public meetings was freight and the impact that the rise of on-demand shipping and transportation, like the rise of on-demand shipping might have on our transportation systems. And ultimately, to accommodate this, the students came up with having these sort of flex-loading and unloading zones that could incorporate smaller-scale warehousing and shipping facilities into that urban fabric, increasing access to goods for the folks living in the area, as well as for places like Amelie Arena, where the Citrus Park Mall, where they're having a lot of goods delivered to and from, a way of incorporating all that, again, without causing additional congestion issues. So the second context area then was the Amelie Arena. And as we all know, the big issue facing Amelie is what happens at the end of the game or the end of an event, where there's the rush of everyone leaving all at once. And the big question that kept coming up with our charrettes was what happens if everyone in that stadium calls an Uber all at once, and what kind of nightmare that might cause. And so we chose to try to take a comprehensive approach to solving those issues, involving all forms of shared mobility. And particularly, some of our participants, or I guess while some of our participants really wanted, I want my Uber or Lyft to pick me up right out in front of the stadium, a lot of them actually thought farther ahead than that and said, no, instead of being picked up right there, I would much prefer to get out of the craziness that's going on in front of the stadium, walk to a remote parking lot, get picked up there, and go about my business. And so ultimately, designating maybe remote parking areas or remote pickoff locations could help to, again, alleviate the pressure of the congestion immediately surrounding the stadium by enabling people to walk far enough away from the arena before getting picked up. And the other thing that that could do is it would inevitably prioritize taking the trolley or taking the bus, which can pick up immediately next to the stadium, or already do have stops immediately around the arena. And then the other, the other design feature that I wanted to highlight was, in order to coordinate all the different modes that's happening in this, both with bus and with trolley, and with car sharing, and to personal vehicles, and walking and biking, was just the importance of signage and wayfinding. There, with all of the activity that is going on all at once, making sure that people clearly and intuitively... making sure that people clearly and intuitively know where they need to go. If if I'm driving my car around where my car needs to go, where I can park, where I can't park, as well as where do I go to pick up the bus and the trolley? And this would need to incorporate or could include both street signs for those who are driving, as well as wayfinding for pedestrians, letting them know again where they can pick up their respective trolley bus or TNC vehicle. So this is a shot from the other side of the stadium. Again, this is right around the area that already is an existing bus stop. And again, as seen, as we talked about in the West River example, having drop off areas such as these, whether they are located immediately next to the station or farther away, again, would just help to ensure that the use of these shared modes wouldn't impede traffic or make things more difficult that way. And ultimately, to enhance these drop off areas, there are some very simple smaller features that could also be incorporated, either to improve the safety or the efficiency of these of the areas and of the modal system as a whole. These, some of the specific examples seen here just include safety bollards along the drop off area. Or kind of like I mentioned before, the seniors having a mobility kiosk that just provides information as to where the bus lines are, where the trolley routes go, and where those remote drop off and pickup areas might be located. So the the third context area was the Citrus Park Mall. So on the exterior of the Citrus Park Mall, it's sort of your typical suburban shopping mall with a bunch of big box stores surrounded by a sea of parking. But once you go inside the mall, it's sort of designed to sort of look like a main street on the inside. And we really wanted to sort of incorporate that design feature onto the outside as well. So again, to bring that main street feel to the exterior. And one of the mains we wanted to do that was ultimately by providing the improving the connectivity and the aesthetics of that front entryway. Currently, it does have like a nice entryway with a sidewalk, but only up until it tees where the 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 road that goes that encircles the parking lot. And so by creating a more inviting and pedestrian-friendly and attractive entryway, you, so that if you are standing on Citrus Park Drive, you could look straight down from the the road all the way to the entrance of the mall, would provide a much more inviting and attractive way that would bring residents in, as well as providing actual a connection to the bus line, the bus stop that is located on Citrus Park Drive right in front of it. And since this is a more suburban arterial, a lot of our participants suggested that people probably would not be as willing to walk or bike to the mall. And so again, enhancing that connection to the transit line was one of the primary ways that the participants in our shirets suggested providing improved shared mobility. And again, like adding those elements for signage and pedestrian crosswalks and landscaping could all, again, incur, ultimately encourage that use of transit. So on the backside of the mall, there currently is a movie theater and which, again, provides another opportunity to have one of those drop off areas. But in actually, there already is an Uber drop off sign located at the back of the mall. But several participants also suggested, again, because of the the importance of transit use as a shared mode in that area, that some of the underutilized parking in the back of the mall could be utilized or transformed into a transit hub, which the students took a crack at designing one themselves. Ultimately, again, to provide greater regional connectivity to transit and ultimately easier access to all the goods and services provided at the mall. And then the last one listed up there was color, which was simply to try to be able to use color as a way of designating where pickup and drop off areas are. And you'll notice in the report that all of the pickup and drop off areas are designated by the color purple, which, again, is just applying that visual intuitive cue to where the people need to actually go. And finally, the the fourth context area was the Keystone Park and Civic Center. And if you're not familiar with Keystone Park, it's located along Gunn Highway. It's got a community center with a few, several ball fields, and then it's adjacent to the public library, which is also across the street from Lutz Lake Park, which got, has several multi-use trails, which connects it to the the Sun Coast Trail. And because of that, we naturally wanted to focus our shared mobility interventions on providing more bike share and providing more bike and pedestrian connections to that area, including additional bike racks and particularly a bike share system. However, while we were talking with a lot of the community leaders in the area, they quickly let us know that we were sort of getting the cart in front of the horse and that before we really could begin talking about shared mobility, there was the issue of safety in that area. And before people would be willing to take a bike or to to use a bike share or or walk down the street to the bus stop, that there needed to be significant safety improvements along Gunn Highway with the roads that are or the the cars that are flying down that highway. And so they were suggesting the need to provide traffic calming along that. And in the image here, there's traffic calming within, in a speed bump within the parking lot. Again, they were specific to, or talking primarily about Gunn Highway itself, whether they're slowing their speed limit or having signal pedestrian crosswalks. Again, the 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 idea being that if we don't first make it safe for pedestrians, then no one is actually going to be willing to use any shared modes or initiatives that we implement in that area. And then this is a shot of the public library that's located in that area. And again, this sort of incorporates several of the design features that we've highlighted already, including the the flex pickup and drop off area as well as electric vehicle charging. And so with that, I tried to to get through that as quickly as I could. But the, as Dennis mentioned, the final steps that we have coming up to finalize this report and get it, hopefully to be a document that you are able to use and incorporate into some of the the plans, the planning documents that you have for the for Hillsborough County and the Tampa area, are to identify the steps that you all can take to begin implementing either some of these features or the designs overall that we've created. And the three things that we're, in particular, that we're going to include in that is first, just to include or identify funding sources that can be used, whether that's grants or state funding or otherwise, as well as partnering agencies that you guys can partner with in order to begin trying to, again, implement and take steps toward incorporating some of the shared mobility elements into into some of these context areas or other areas. And then, as Dennis mentioned, we're also going to be developing order of magnitude cost estimates for a lot of these design features and to give you a sense of what it would take in order to fully incorporate these designs. And then lastly, based on the policy review that we did at the beginning of this project, we'll also be making recommendations for changes to zoning codes or the comprehensive plan and those sorts of, all the planning documents that you all have in order to to be able to implement all of these designs. And with that, I will close and open it up to any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. A great presentation. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Joseph?
I have a question. Great presentation, by the way, guys. A lot of good information coming out of this. I can see it coming in the future here. You spoke about coalescing transportation in these different areas. So obviously, this is going to lead to some sort of need for more space, right? In those areas, a grab for more space for transportation. So my my thought is, and in your discussions, obviously, this is a kind of outside question from what you guys were doing, but in your discussions, has anybody thought about multi-using those spaces? Obviously, if we invest in more transportation space in the downtown, it's not being used all times a day, only when Amelie Arena empties. What else can we do with those spaces? Have any thought just wildly come out about those sorts of things or?
Go ahead and start. I know at least in terms of, in the case of Amelie Arena, one thing that a lot of the participants mentioned was just the, with those remote parking lots, remote pickup and drop off areas, was using existing surface lots. I know that in order to prevent the need to create additional space for those, that was one thing that consistently got brought up, was trying to partner with either property owners or whatever it might be to use existing pavement for those areas was at least one suggestion.
Right. And so that was more like accommodating our existing space more efficiently. There are courses that need to have more space, right, at some point, or to rethink how we're using the space. And and you'll see some of that, so that that space that might be currently used for a bus pickup and drop off could also facilitate perhaps Lyft and Uber or some other forms of transportation. But there are other issues of space that we didn't get into directly here, but that I'm constantly thinking about now. As an example, the last time I was in town was not for this project, but my wife and I rode the scooters around. And just the idea of where do we corral those? And and should they be designated space like bike share? And in this ecosystem, to make it less like the Wild West, those are, those are important considerations. And I guess finally, one thing that I did want to stress is 10 years ago, we may have been in this room and talking about very different issues, whether it was flooding or emergency management or hurricane protection. And and we weren't thinking about Lyft and Uber or about bike share or about scooters because they didn't exist, you know? And so this gives us a chance to get a little bit ahead of the game. One of the goals that I had was that I think we're going to see more autonomy in vehicles. And we might have autonomous shuttles and possibly even autonomous vehicles that you and I all drive around in at some point. I might miss them, but you might see them in in your life. And so if we can implement these kind of integrated designs now for the vehicles that we have this mix, I think it'll better facilitate the integration of those other technologies in the future.
Especially with that, sorry, while I'm asking that, especially with that very forward-thinking like idea, there are other ways that existing transportation infrastructure could be reused. For example, if if, for example, autonomous vehicles do become more prevalent and the need for parking does go down, then maybe we can reuse some existing on-street parking to be some of these drop off areas and some of the other things that might need extra space. There are other ways that we might be able to use or retrofit existing transportation infrastructure to serve or to better serve these new and emerging mobility trends.
Oh, very good points. Very good. I had one more question for you guys. I noticed kind of, I was waiting for you to get to the end to the Keystone area. Before that, we were talking about a lot of private investment, you know, fixing, because you spoke about pedestrian design being important, and I believe that also, before we get to these other things, fixing the pedestrian design, making these private kind of areas reach out, right, to the public streets and connect better. But when you have a public area, you kind of saw the Keystone people kind of flipped it on you. And they were like, well, there's things even before we get to that that we need to take care of. Are you guys finding a lot of that in your research? And will the final report make those statements when it comes to, you know, the municipality or the state having to really pick up on their side and start making streets and sidewalks and all those walkways within their purview better, right? Because right now, we're kind of talking about our world. But there's another world that we attach to that has to be looked at too. And I think that might be why F dot jumped on you guys and said, hey, this looks interesting. Give us some information too. Are you guys going to be making those statements in your report, you think? Or have you seen any of that?
You can tell us where we are with the recommendations.
For sure. Yeah. And you're absolutely right, as it terms with the project with F U T, there is definitely that statewide focus of what can F U T do as a state in order to make it, make local governments be able to implement this stuff. And so that absolutely was sort of the the other piece of the recommendation side as it relates to the project we're doing for the state does incorporate some of those ideas. That's, that's, since that's the last phase of it, we haven't quite gotten to all of that yet. So I don't have a detailed answer for you, but that absolutely is a piece of of that puzzle as it relates to the the work that we're coordinating with the state to do.
And I would say too, so one of the thoughts I had also was like the state initiative for Vision Zero. Some of that falls on, you know, you as a planning commission and the MPO. But a lot of that does rest at the state level. And so this idea, particularly up at Keystone, that, yeah, all of what you guys are talking about, it's great. But if it's not safe for my kid to walk around up there, a lot of this, the idea of the bike connectivity just kind of fall falls apart, right? And so my hope is that we'll see that in the policy recommendations. We should also be able to see fun, funding opportunities for that. I don't know that we will be as direct as, you know, I don't want to say calling out, but pegging which entity needs to cover it, but recognizing that this is an important issue, that there is funding for it and here's how much it costs, or generally order of magnitude costs for things. So that should be helpful for for us with with Keystone in particular.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Chris?
Over here. I was curious what flex loading and unloading zones look like with the onslaught of all the deliveries? And like, how do you see that materializing?
Do you want to address the one at the mall?
I think you mentioned it as part of the West River Development.
Yeah. So the, there is a lot of different, a lot of it will be context-specific, honestly. But the the idea would be that both for, say, in the case of Amelie Arena, a place where all of the the freight that needs to come in to provide the goods that they then use to run the arena, a place for that to get dropped off, as well as with the potential of on-demand shipping and the the rise of that, could there be a place where, say, you and I, like, you know, if I order something, I could go pick it up there, those sorts of things? And having that kind of multipurpose drop off of all forms of freight and delivery, if like a space that is flexible enough to accommodate all those sorts of things. And exactly what that looks like could change from place to place. I know specifically with Amelie, there was talk of a, or at least a couple of members were talking about how it would be great if they could have like a two, two floors of it, where the, a lot of the the major deliveries would be happen on the the bottom floor and the top floor would then be more of those, like the smaller on-demand deliveries. But
And we also looked at the Citrus Park Mall. We, the designs don't focus on that as much because, you know, you could incorporate these really everywhere. But already at the mall, they have drop off like transshipment areas. And the idea would be to kind of formalize that. We were looking at areas where you could have great separation, where the, there wouldn't be the conflict with these vehicles. But I remember when there were different companies and you would order through a catalog before the online, and then you would go to the mall and pick up your your stuff, right? And so I think we're going to see more and more of that. I think we're going to see a transition back to these kind of distribution centers. And whether, and I think at some point, that might rescue some malls, right? You order everything from Amazon and it goes someplace and you can pick it up. Or it goes someplace and then an autonomous vehicle takes it to your house, whatever that is. There, there may be a need for for that type of a of a system. So hopefully, we see that. And we should have at least one example in your array of designs for for how that could be. And there will also be an example in the, I know for the Leon County example as well. Because we wanted to show it both in a commercial setting and then also kind of more in a, like the the arena setting, where there's a lot of current distribution of stuff, you know? Does that answer the question a little bit?
Just, I wasn't sure. The word flexible to me meant that it might move around a little bit. So I interpreted it differently. But it makes sense what you're saying.
Okay. Yeah. I'm not exactly sure where we where we thought about the the flex zone other than it is maybe something more than just a loading dock, that it does allow both, you know, the in and out of the the goods and services from that spot.
Okay. Commissioner Marina?
Thank you. I want to look at the Citrus Park piece. And you mentioned, when you talked to the folks in Keystone, there was some pushback. Did you get pushback with Citrus Park? Because it seems as if this is the least amount of changes between the two. And you're talking earlier about this is, this can be a regional transportation hub, but it's, it's missing a lot of connectivity that exists to this day. So was that something that the the property owner came back and said, you know, we're not really interested?
You start.
From what I remember, I don't, I can't remember if we've had too much interaction with the property owner in that case. But that might be, correct me if I'm wrong with that. Right. Which I think they did, the students did reach out to them, but wasn't able to get too much in contact. So I think the, the, at least the regional transit hub was, again, with just the idea of if we don't expect too many people to be walking and biking to and from, as like a place maybe with Keystone that has connections to all those multi-use trails, then if we're going to incorporate shared mobility, maybe transit's the way to go. And particularly in a suburban, suburban area that might not have as much transit access, as you mentioned, as well as has all this existing underutilized surface as you mentioned, as well as has all this existing underutilized surface parking that, particularly if shared mobility does become more popular, might be less and less necessary, then that might be a place to put it. The question of access is a good one, and I know that's, that was sort of a challenge throughout of trying to figure out a way of, if we don't think people are going to be trying to access this through shared modes already, then how can we try to encourage that and like provide space for that?
Yeah, and I'll add a little bit to that if I may. So we did try to work with the owner of the facility to get inside and do surveys of shoppers. And that was, that did not happen for a variety of reasons, not, not because of our lack of intent on making that happen. So we were able to do some surveys outside of the facility with shoppers to get general perceptions. Now, these are users of the facility, not tenants of the facility. We then also talked a lot with folks at the library, which isn't too far away, who are users of the facility. So I, I can tell you that the idea of connecting to the regional bike path made a lot of sense because it's not too far away from there, but there's no good connectivity. The question is who's going to ride their bike to the mall? There were some safety issues that came up from people saying that that was a concern. The other thing that's a little odd about that site is there's really beautiful landscaping out there and some kind of tree-lined approaches, but there's not good pedestrian connectivity. It looks good when you're driving your car in and there are sidewalks maybe on one side of the road and then it bounces back and forth. So it really wasn't designed for people to get off of the bus and just get up to the front door, which is different, you know? That's something that I think we recommended would be a very low-cost approach for the landlord to put, put in some structures like that to make it easier for people. The thing with the, with the regional bus terminal, there was a lot of discussion about a need for promoting commuting away from the airport and getting people to the airport. That came up several times, so that was some of the impetus for that design. Does that help answer the question a little bit, like where it came from?
Yeah, a little bit. To the, to the northwest of the site, Citrus Park Little League, where there was at one point a park and ride and further to the, I'm sorry, northeast of the site, Citrus Park. My concern looking at this though is that north of the site, there's a high school, a middle school, an elementary school, I believe either a charter or private school. And the, on the western half of the site, you see there's a Dick's Sporting Goods there. You could see that Dick's Sporting Goods from the Publix that's on Gun Highway, across Gun Highway and Sheldon. So there's a clear line of sight from those middles, the middle school and elementary school to the mall. And Sickles, I know you mentioned customers and shoppers, but a lot of the employment base are 15, 16, 17-year-olds who are getting off of school.
Right.
And as you mentioned, it's not very safe for them to go down Sheldon because the first stoplight they can get to, other than Hickson, is down at Citrus Park Drive, which is now being extended all the way through to the Eagles, basically.
Right.
So that's why looking at this, you know, obviously you want to get to the trail and you do need improved lighting on Citrus Park Drive, it's such a wide road. But growing up in that area, so much traffic is coming down Gun Highway, like you mentioned with Keystone.
Yeah.
And that corner of the property is really underserved when it comes to multimodal options, including biking and pedestrian. So that, that jumped out at me as, you know, what was the reason for and why the property owner isn't involved? Because I would think it's a TCO easement that is, gives you that clear shot all the way to Ehrlich Road, which development is being brought to the front of Ehrlich Road or Gun Highway there and the subdivision where Citrus Park Elementary and the middle schools, that's, I mean, I see kids in there all the time. So that to me just seems like a no-brainer, connecting it to the back of the mall. You give them a protected path, you keep them off the road.
Yeah. Yeah. And hopefully some of the design features, even though we don't send a path in that general direction, could be applied to make that a reality. Because it is, malls are problematic that way. They, they tend to be hard to get to. It's not easy to walk to somebody's local mall or ride a bike to it. And so, you know, hopefully some of this gets us at least thinking about those concepts. Yeah, but those are excellent points. Yeah.
Yeah, we can absolutely add that to the final designs that we include, like at least having that connection to the northwest as well.
Right. We'll definitely do that. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Roman?
Thank you. So I was glad to see the traffic calming aspects in the report. You mentioned in the, for the Keystone area, the speed bumps. I saw that was also shown in the West River area as well. And I would just like to, I mean, I'm glad that you mentioned other, other options besides speed bumps, such as the murals at intersections and that kind of thing. I would just like to challenge you to look at some other traffic calming alternatives to speed bumps, such as the chicanes and other, there are other methods. So I would like to see something other than speed bumps be recommended in the plans, especially for the West, well, the rest of the River area. I mean, it might be appropriate in certain, in certain areas where there's no other option, but I'd like to see some other alternatives and be creative in that. Okay? Thank you.
And as well as, I think too, these are still kind of conceptual designs, and so in some ways, the concept is we need traffic calming. And exactly what we do, exactly how we accomplish that, there are a bunch of, like a suite of options that we can implement, but we can absolutely incorporate some other, make those represented in the designs themselves.
Right. And the streets are beautiful there. I mean, the ones that can be restored and/or maintained. And so hopefully the brick surface will also, might reduce the speed a tiny bit, who knows? But there's some, but again, other, other methods. One thing that I've seen that's not, not exactly traffic calming are just manually operated flashing lights for people, for pedestrians to cross, just when, when as needed, and they seem to work. I don't know, you maybe have a bad experience with that, but I find in Tallahassee where we have them, they, they tend to, people tend to pay attention to them.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it would just be to like make sure you understand what the problem is and then address the problem.
Right.
But you may not know it at this, at this level, so keep the recommendations kind of on a higher level and look at all different options. I think that would be real helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. We look forward to the final report. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation on the University Area Community Development Corporation. Sarah Combs, welcome.
Thank you so much. I have some handouts to give out. I don't know what the best way to do that, hand them around?
Yeah, please state your name and address.
Sarah Combs, University Area CDC, 101413 North 22nd Street, Tampa, Florida, 33612. All right. Well, I just want to thank you all so much for allowing me the opportunity to come and present to you what we're doing in the University Area community. For those of you that aren't familiar with the University Area CDC, where we are a nonprofit organization, a public-private partnership dedicated to improving the university area community and working with the residents in order to do so. We have a lot of different programs and services that we have at the University Area CDC. Not going to go over all of them, I would have you here all day, but we do focus on cultural arts programming, youth and adult education, health and wellness, crime and safety, community engagement, workforce development, affordable housing, self-sufficiency programs, transportation, as well as manage a coalition of partners in order to do so. Our service area, to just give you an idea of the area that we're talking about, is Bears to the north, Rusby Downs to the east, Fowler to the south, and 275 to the west. That's our primary area. That's the area that we'll be discussing in this presentation. We also serve outside of that area in Hillsborough County and also have programming in nine different counties. The University Area CDC is in a redevelopment area as per Hillsborough County. I think that's important to note. We also have four different opportunity zones in the area, four different census tracts. So a lot of the work that we're doing around attainable housing, we're utilizing this new opportunity funding to be able to leverage that funding and create more housing. So for those of you that are familiar with the University Area community, formerly known as Suitcase City, has a lot of different challenges. So for us, we really changed the way that we were doing services and operating as an organization to a more holistic approach to community development. And what does that mean? It meant that we were going to get out behind our wrought iron fences, our armed security guards, and start doing work in the community. The idea is that you drive into the community and you can see that change is happening. That hasn't been done before. You haven't really been able to drive into the community and see a noticeable change. We wanted to change that. And so we decided that we needed to create a plan in order to do so, because it was so difficult to think, where do you start? There's so many challenges. We decided to create our Neighborhood Transformation Strategy, which is what you're seeing right now. Those are the handouts that I gave out. And hopefully that'll help you understand how we're going to really see measurable change in the University Area community. So where do you start? We started by creating a plan and bringing partners in to be able to really focus on that plan. And the plan isn't just around a specific area. It's not just around attainable housing. It's around housing, affordable, our safety, it's around infrastructure, it's about walkability, it's around workforce. And all of these key elements are so critically important in order to move a community forward. And if you leave one of these elements out, you're not going to see the change that you want to see in these communities. So that's why having a plan is so critically important, and this is our three-year plan. So there's 10 initiatives in our plan, and I'm going to go really quickly through them all, because I know I am timing myself, so I can hopefully stay on track for y'all. So the first thing we were going to do was start in the heart. We were going to start in the heart of the community, in the, one of the hardest crime statistics tracts. And if you're familiar with this community, it's between Bears and Fowler. 138 was known as Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office as the block, the hardest crime statistics in that area. And we own that property. Hillsborough County grounded it to us, seven acres. We decided, what should we do with this seven acres in the heart of this, this community? We decided that we were going to ask the residents. And that's often things that we do, is when we have an idea that we think is great, we first vet it to the community. And more times than not, they tell us, you're totally off-track, which is great, and then we change your plan. But we decided to build a park because that's what residents said they wanted. They want a place where their kids could play, they wanted a place where they could meet their neighbors, create social bonds, create that community efficacy that is missing in this community. And so we said that's what we were going to do. So we started with the 33-bed organic garden about five years ago. And then the garden led to a teaching kitchen and classroom that we built. Then we built a playground because unfortunately, a little boy got hit and killed on the streets on 19th Street because there's no sidewalks and very little lighting in the community. And then we decided we were going to build a multipurpose sports field, walking trails, fencing, lighting. There's a one-acre freshwater pond that we're stocking with tilapia, and it's going to be a fishing pond. So in the heart of the urban core, you're going to have a place where you can catch a fish, go cook, pick organic veggies, and cook a healthy, sustainable meal from the heart of the community. And this is where we are right now. Our park is under construction. It's taken us about three years. One and a half years of those were in permitting. But we are so excited that our grand opening will be in November. And so we just wanted to show you some pictures of the park that's coming together beautifully right in the heart of the community. The second initiative for us was, you know, often people say, challenges are so big, how do you do that? Well, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. How do you change a community? One block at a time. So you can see in the heartbeat of the community is the park that we're building, that's the center. And then we're adopting all the blocks that surround the community and creating a program that we're calling Block by Block. And that is a 10-week program where we meet with residents where they are in life, where they live, and really engage with them to connect them to resources and connectivity, allowing them to access for success. The other piece of our plan that's so critically important is the crime and safety of our residents in the community. So we worked with Hillsborough County and brought in a consultant, Ken Stapleton, who was down in Miami. And he worked with us for about a year to create a community safety action plan. That plan was about 200 pages long, so it was a big plan. And when his work was done, he was gone and we had this beautiful 200-page plan, of which we decided to really take the meat of the, of the plan and break it into three specific areas. Programs, built environment, and strategic communication. And we formed our Safer, Stronger Council to kind of oversee these initiatives. So through this structure, we have about eight different committees that focus on all areas of safety. And we meet on a quarterly basis to update our dashboard, to show the areas that we're going, we're partnering really well, seeing crime statistics that are going down. But this is a really important element of our initiatives. The other piece of our plan that's critically important is our University Area Leaders Collective. So this is a program where we're engaging residents and helping and educating them on how to speak about the things that are happening in their community, not just to commissions like yourself, but to other residents in the community. We want them to tell other residents about the opportunities for change in the community and get them to be the leaders, the ones that, you know, talk about what's happening and get them involved at a, at a community level. And so that program has been thriving. The other piece is our, really our grassroots initiative, which is critically important, and that's through our Community Outreach Committee. And this is us beating the streets every Thursday, walking, talking with residents, engaging with residents. We do this, every other month, we go to a different apartment in, in the area and have a barbecue, talk with residents, engage with them. Again, access, access them and connect them with resources and areas that they need. We hold a family movie night. When we found out kids in our community had never seen a movie before, we thought that was unheard of and something that we could provide. So we do that. Kids watch, get to watch a great movie, but more than that, moms are meeting other moms. They're forming these bonds of connectivity and support and creating a sense of community, which is the piece that's missing in our community. We hold block parties every month. We get a dance floor and grill out food and again, create opportunities for neighbors to meet each other, unlike the community, not like, not like the communities, but the communities like you're probably familiar with, where you go to a park, you meet other moms, you create playdates. That's what we're trying to do in this community. We also created the Hangout, which is a teen initiative where we get to hear from our teens about the community, and they have some really interesting ideas. And what's interesting about here, if we can get the teen involved, then that's our key to getting the parent involved. And so we found that that has been a big success. We also built 18 of these dream boxes and installed them throughout the community, and we've stocked them with books because we want to improve the literacy rates in our community. We also have educational information and things about what's happening in the community stocked there. And it's not just what we do at the UACDC, it's how we do it. So we contracted and employed our residents not just to build the dream boxes, but they are now contracted and paid to stock the dream boxes. So again, involving them in those opportunities for engagement and employment. And then one of the most important initiatives that we started about three years ago was as we saw that the area was changing around us, a lot of things happening with innovation partnership and the innovation district, what happens to this community? How do we ensure that the residents here get an opportunity to benefit from all the great opportunity that's happening around them? How do you ensure that our residents don't get gentrified? Well, if you own the land, you get to say what happens to it. And so we thought it was critically important to create a real estate arm, Harvest Hope Properties, and create a landbaking program. So we launched it and have acquired 20 properties within a one-mile radius of the Harvest Hope Park, and we have four properties pending. Now, I say within a one-mile radius of the Harvest Hope Park because I hope you understand and start to see it's a clustered approach to community development. You start with the park, you adopt the blocks around it, then you buy land within a one-mile radius around it. You can't do a spot shot to community development because the blight will swallow it up. But if you do it in a clustered approach, you start to see meaningful change. You start to see infrastructure improvements and communities, residents start to really get excited about what's happening around them. So once we acquire a parcel of land, we put up a big sign that says, oh, excuse me, growing our community one block at a time, because we want residents to be excited about the change that's happening in their community, and most importantly, to be a part of that change. And that's where attainable housing comes into, comes into the picture. So once we buy a parcel of land, we have a community conversation and find out what we want to build on that land. And then we think of innovative solutions to attainable housing. We all know the struggle that we're having in Tampa Bay with the attainable housing challenge and crisis. Well, how can we create innovative solutions to housing? And so we've thought of a few. The idea was to be able to take a resident in our community, a single mom, find out how we could get her to be a homeowner for cheap, cheaper to own her home than it is to rent. And so we came up with an idea to create a modular product called Sound and Safe Housing, and to be able to retrofit that modular home to be, meet the Florida Building Code and pass all the inspections and be able to get this individual in our community an opportunity for homeownership and an opportunity for wealth building as well. We decided that we were going to make it a lease-to-purchase home, give them a year to be able to do it, because, you know, not everyone's ready to own a home. And so it takes a little time to do that. And so we're excited that this program just delivered, we just delivered our first two homes last week. You can see me, I'm very excited. I'm screaming because it's so exciting. And our first two single-family moms will be moving into those homes on September 12th. So they'll be owning their own homes for less than they're renting at about $800 a month. So we're really excited about this. We figured out an innovative solution and we're hoping to be able to do more of that. Another innovative solution was acquiring, we acquired five properties just north of our park. We subdivided those... We subdivided those properties into two lots, so we had 10 lots. And we said, let's bring someone in who's doing really good work. We brought in Habitat for Humanity Hillsborough, and we partnered with them, and they're building 10 houses across the street from our park. And then working with our residents to be able to get them to be the owners of those homes. So again, not duplicating resources, but finding out who's really good at what they do and bringing them in, which is critically important. And these are some pictures of the first house, so it kind of takes you through the stages that we've been through so far. So we're really excited about that. We're also working on a 118-unit apartment complex at 18th and Fletcher. It's a low-income housing tax credit property. We're working with Blue Sky Communities on that, so we're very, very excited about that, because that will be a place for about 118 families, which is critically important right now. And then we're also working on a home of the Harvest Hope Cultural Campus, which is just south of the park, which you can see that up there. This is critically important, because right now, it's a brownfield property. It's contaminated with arsenic, which is a lot of the properties in the University Area Community. We see that as an opportunity, an opportunity to take a property and clean it up and put it back into productive use. So we have, we're pending acquiring this property. There's three commercial buildings on it, and we hope to be able to do the site remediation and the cleanup in about a week. So very excited about that. The other piece that's critically important is the walkability of the community. About, I would say, 20% of our residents own a car. So the main mode of transportation is walking and biking in the community. We decided to partner with the MPO, as well as the Department of Health, to do a walkability study in the area. Some people thought that was a silly thing to do. If you could walk into the community, you could see there's very little lighting, very little sidewalks. But a lot of the decision-makers don't come into our community, so our report is important to be able to showcase what's needed. And the results were not very many light, not too many lightings and lights, not too many sidewalks. And so that's critically important for us to be able to create safe pedestrian paths for residents in our community. And so we had a specific goal in mind that we wanted to achieve with that study. And that was, as you can see at the very top of the map, Moore Elementary is our walking school, walking school for the community. We wanted to be able to create a safe walking path from Moore Elementary to our park that we're building, back to the University Area CDC, and back out to Fowler, excuse me, Fletcher. And why that's important is because, again, if you go into our community, you will see there's very little sidewalks, and you see moms pushing strollers, you see kids walking in the middle of the street. The lighting's very bad, and, you know, for us, we just think it's imperative that we, we give these, these residents an opportunity to be able to have safe pedestrian paths. And we're also focusing on the infrastructure of the community. Some of our residents don't have access to water. They're unfortunately on a well system. A lot of them don't have access to sewer as, as well. So when we're creating new developments, we have to put in septic systems, systems or gravity sewers, which we think is not quite appropriate. So as we're doing this clustered approach development, we also have to try to improve the water and the sewer and the other infrastructure needs of the community. So it's really looking at a comprehensive approach to this community and, and taking everything into account, which is so important. We talked about our partners. We wouldn't be able to do this work without our partners. We have a Partners Coalition of about 330 members that meet on a quarterly basis to talk about specific things in the University Area Community. And again, how we can work together more collectively. We're stronger together than we are apart, and we can do so much more if we're working on a focused initiative, which is the plan that you see in front of you. This is an example of one of our partnerships with USF. You can see all the different areas that we're working with them. This is a perfect example of what we're doing with all of our partners. It's so important to see what they're good at and bring them into the fold, because we create so much, so much more and better outcomes by doing that. We also have a business metrics dashboard that we update on a monthly basis to show our partners, as well as our funders and anyone that wants to see the work we're doing. It showcases on a front and back all the great work that we're doing, and then helps us to know where we're off track, where we need to change a little bit of the, the program model to achieve the goals that we're, we're set to achieve. We also run our organization like a business. We're a nonprofit, so we are a business, but it's important that we have a good bottom line, because we reinvest that back into the community. 91 cents of every dollar goes directly back to programs and services. So that's a 9% admin fee charge that we have, which I'm very proud of. Again, making sure we're good stewards of our dollar. And these are our change agents. These are who make it happen on a daily basis. If you work for the University Area CDC, this is a calling. This is a passion. We do things very fast-paced, because we have a big plan to achieve. And so these are the people who make it happen on a daily basis. And then I'd like to show you our video, and then I'll open it up for some questions.
She was in love. Why was she in love? Perfect. Number two, they were in the park. I would take my kids every day in the morning at 7:30, 7:45, walk to the UACDC with the little kids, lunch on one hand, backpack in another hand, and we would go to the UACDC all day long, from 8 to 2. We really had fun. The kids would stay in the little classroom, and I would stay at my classroom, learning English, practicing. And I heard from my classmates that I could take the GED next door. I graduated in 2010 from the GED class, and it was a big accomplishment.
I drove into the community and, and saw the need, for sure. There's great need in this community, but I saw the opportunity. The opportunity just blew me away, and I said, I have to be a part of this. It's a bigger calling for me than just a job. You know, how do you change a community? How do you improve the community? And for us, we think we have the solution. And it's through our Neighborhood Transformation Strategy, where we're creating a park in the heart of the community, seven acres. And then we are adopting all the blocks that surround the park and entering a program called Block by Block. In the last year and a half, we've been able to purchase 18 properties within a one-mile radius of the Harvest Hope Park. We put up a big sign that says Harvest Hope Properties, growing our community one block at a time, because we want residents to be excited about what's happening in this community and to be a part of it, you know? Not just to see it, but to be engaged and be a part of it. We really want to create attainable housing in this community in all shapes and forms. So not just single-family, but also townhome, we're looking at modulators. We really want to think outside the box in figuring out, how does it work and how and what does it take to make a resident in this community become a homeowner? The other piece that's so critical in, in our strategy is empowering the residents to be able to do this work, to talk about it, to be able to be the advocates for it. And so we're creating our Leaders Collective Program, which is really empowering residents to talk about meaningful change in the community.
I feel very important for me to live in a neighborhood, because I get to have an experience that normal residents have, where I can understand them, I can relate more to their needs. We have big plans about what's going to go on. This is just the beginning. This is just the tip of the iceberg.
Success looks like a community that no longer needs a CDC. We want to make a community that's inclusive and healthy and walkable and likeable and drivable, and, you know, making sure that all those points of the community are really brought together in holistic way, putting residents, you know, at the beginning, at the front, where they should be.
As an immigrant in another country, it's not easy. I went from, from zero and started escalating, little by little. It takes little steps to progress, but just don't give up. Life is beautiful. Life is worth the living. Live your life. Just, that's my advice. Don't give up.
Anything's possible, and we can change a community.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Joseph?
Yeah. Great presentation, by the way, and applaud the work you're doing down there.
Thank you so much.
You spoke briefly about land banking, kind of an economic strengthening of the community. This is kind of outside of your presentation, but I'm just wondering what the community's feelings, what your feelings, what the CDC's feelings might be. There's a lot of development, like you said, going on right at your doorstep. A lot of that development doesn't seem to really recognize your community and what's going on there. Have you guys tried to reach out to the people doing those developments? Has there been those discussions? What, what are your feelings? What are your thoughts on that relationship between the community and what's going on all around it?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and something that we get asked quite a lot. And, you know, if, the word gentrification is really the word that you're speaking of, and if you're in gentrification, it's almost impossible to reverse. So that was one of our main strategies in creating our land banking program, was to be able to, you know, figure out how to get ahead of that. The other piece that's so critically important, and really the only, the only tool that others have been successful in not gentrifying these kind of communities, is by creating a community benefits agreement. And so that's what I'm working on, is creating a community benefits agreement or program, where it allows builders or developers that are coming into the area to be able to say, this is the benefit that's going to give, I'm going to give the community. Whether it be hiring from the community, whether it be creating green space, it could be specifically participating in some of the different initiatives that the community has deemed appropriate and important, building a daycare. I mean, we have a plethora of different programs and services that could fit within the community benefits agreement. We're working with Hillsborough County now, we're working with Mike Merrill, and trying to figure out if the county can give us some teeth to that. We don't want this to be a voluntary community benefits agreement. It needs to have teeth, so when developers are coming in, that there is a benefit that's specifically given to the community.
Very good. That's exactly what I was talking about, that economic target. It seems like there's, there could be jobs being created, and there might be a community right there who could, so that's just great.
Yeah, we want to create a tie that has teeth, you know? It's not an elected option. So hopefully, we'll be able to be successful. It's never been done in Hillsborough County, but it's not to say that we can't do it and create a model for other communities that are experiencing that or looking to experience that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
One of the things that stood out to me was that you, when you mentioned that you're going through in the community, you're asking people what their, what their needs are and what they're wanting to see. I was curious about, what is maybe like the, the top, you know, item or need that the community is asking for?
Absolutely. Housing, transportation, and employment are our top three. We go out and do a community benefits, or a community needs assessment, community survey every, every two years. And that's boots-on-ground in the community, riding buses, doing the community, or filling out the survey, to be able to make sure that we're really generating the response from the community to these specific pertinent questions. There's about 65. You can find the survey, we just published the results on our website, and that talks about the specific key areas that the community is voicing. But those are the top three that we from, from the study.
And then you also touched on, and which led into a question about the, you know, for security. And I've always been a big opponent of, you know, lighting is one of the best sources of security that you can have. And I was curious if the lighting problems there are, that there's just not lights, period? Or, or we just, you know, is TECO not maintaining them? You know, what's the?
Yeah, it's a challenging answer, but I'll give you, we've been working on this for about a year and a half, and meeting with Hillsborough County and TECO and a lot of different people. And the map, the lighting map that has been published is not accurate. It shows that there's enough lights, but we did an analysis, we went out and actually calculated all the lights and did our own map. And so we're working with TECO to show them that this is your map you're saying of the community, this is the map that you, these are the actual lights that you have. And then we're also working with them to do tree trimming, because that's another issue that we're having, is that if a tree's blocking a light, there's no illumination at all. So we're also going out and surveying every single street and showing them the trees that are overhanging over the lights, to try to get the trees trimmed, to see if that will work, and then trying to see if we can upgrade to LED or just reposition the lights, so that way it will shine over the sidewalk. A lot of them, it's, it's silly things like that, that if you just reposition it, and it can, it can shine over the sidewalk instead of in the ditch. So we're doing several different things to try to get that improved. It's not an easy answer, but we're, we're, we're still focused on it.
So are they willing to, like, you know, the reports that you've, like, provided to them, are they willing to actually go in and start putting in, like, new lights? Or are you having, you know, like, on their own, are you having to worry about, like, getting contracts and, you know?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying. Yeah, we just had a meeting last week, and we felt like we were getting somewhere, and we, we kind of got pushed back. They say it's possible, it's just, it, you have to provide pictures and justification and things of that, that nature to speed up the tree trimming plans. So we're going to do that. We're not going to give up. We're going to keep fighting and keep doing it, because we think it's so important, especially with the development that's happening around it, the park that's being built, you know, those kind of things, that this should be a priority, so.
Yeah, I definitely agree.
Yeah, thank you.
I was curious about, well, I love what you're doing, I've been following it closely. With the modular homes, you mentioned a year and a half of permitting. Are the, is that an obstacle for this kind of new, new housing type in our area? And is that kind of on its way to changing?
Yeah, the year and a half was for our park for permitting.
Okay.
So modular, the modular homes was a learning curve for us, because we thought that, we didn't realize that we would have to retrofit a modular home to be able to meet the Florida Building Code and the Land Development Code. And, and we did, so that added on additional cost to it. And so we're working with the Commission on the Status of Women, as well as to talk about attainable housing and seeing if we can change some of the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan to make it easier to kind of build these innovative solutions to housing. And so we're excited about that, because they've been very, very receptive to that, and we're excited to see if we can get some of those things changed, so that way, you know, these innovative solutions, the, you know, the barrier that falls, you know, in front of you, can kind of be removed for us to try to try these things and, and make them work. And we're excited that we finally have a product that we've done, so we've kind of went through that and tested it, and can kind of now go back and say, okay, these were the challenges, these were the roadblocks, these were the red tape. If we can get these removed, then we can actually scale this. And that modular product can be created and built in a factory setting in one month. So right now, we're landing up our land, and if we're able to really scale this, it could have a huge impact on the community. And again, homeownership is so critically important in that area, less than 10% homeownership in the University Area. It's a transient community. So in order to stabilize the community, the number one thing that we have to do is homeownership. If we don't do that, we'll never stabilize the community. So everyone that we've talked to, though, was really receptive around listening to, you know, the changes that need to be made in those kind of, you know, policies. So we're excited to see that move forward.
Melissa, are you, someone from your team?
Melissa's been great. I've been bugging her.
I'm sure she's on.
A lot, yes, she's been great.
Is the, are, is there an opportunity to make the homes in Florida?
Yes, they, they're made in home, yeah. Champion, these, this is the first one that's ever been made that I'm aware of, Champion Homes. So we, we purchased the modular component, but then we had them retrofit it in the factory set, setting to be able to meet the building code. And that's the first one they've ever done. They've never done that. The ones that they've done have just been delivered to a planned development mobile home community, where, where that it's allowed, but not just in, you know, unless it's outside of a planned community, it wouldn't meet the standard building code.
And where did you say that company is?
It's, it's Titan Homes, it falls under Champion Homes, and it's probably about 40 miles from here.
Oh, so it's close by.
Oh, yeah. Very close.
Thank you.
Since, thank you. Since these are like modular homes, and you're having to have them retrofitted, are we, are the homes getting the designation of an actual single, single-family house, or are they still, you know, being called a manufactured house?
No, sir, they're single-family. No, sir, they're a single family.
Oh, fantastic.
Yep, and they are passing everything, so, yeah, it's pretty cool. Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. I'm delighted to introduce this next item, One Water Planning Initiatives. This is something that we have been working very closely with our partners in Hillsborough County on for the past several months. And it really represents an innovative way of thinking about water, thinking about the interrelated nature of water. And we're also using that innovative and interrelated approach to think about our comprehensive plan. So it's a really exciting project. And I am thrilled to present George Cassidy, the Assistant County Administrator for Hillsborough County Public Utilities. George has been a fantastic partner. His staff have been wonderful collaborative partners with us on this and many other projects. So he will be going through some more details about One Water and some work that his team is doing. And then I'll wrap it up with a discussion of how it applies to our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. George Cassidy, Public Utilities Administrator, Hillsborough County. And thank you for having us today. And we're super excited about the One Water Initiative. It's come about over the last couple of years. It's gained a lot of momentum. It's a, I wouldn't say a complete departure, but it's a big departure from where we've been from a water resources perspective in the past. So, the One Water concept, so it's pretty basic. We just want to establish the fact that all water has value, that water is a life sustaining resource to us. And there is no substitute. As much as we'd like to go out and find something else to drink, water is the basis of life for us. I'm going to take you back to grade school. We'll talk a little bit about the water cycle. If you remember in those, those wonderful lessons, we've got rain that falls from the sky. That rain nurtures plant life. It, it nourishes our streams and rivers and our estuaries. Along the way, we have evaporation taking place. And if you had a really cool science teacher, they taught you about transpiration, which is water loss from plant life. So that goes back up into the sky. It ultimately condenses into clouds and again rains and the cycle starts over again. The next step in the water cycle is to recognize the built environment. And in that built environment, we're inserting a population center. And in that population center, we're recognizing that water is withdrawn for public use, whether it's for irrigation purposes, obviously for drinking purposes, maybe even some industrial purposes. So you use the water, it's made dirty, we clean it back up, we put it back into the environment again. Only difference here is just recognizing that there's water used in, in the cycle. Now we've got version 3.0. 3.0 says there's a much more integrated approach to looking at all of our water cycle. And it really starts to become important when we are stressing our available water systems for, for our own use, for drinking purposes or for agriculture or any other use that we may have intended for it. So the rain that falls from the sky becomes stormwater to us. And in an urban setting, it's really important that we're managing that stormwater resource because ultimately it becomes a supply to the surface waters or it becomes part of our groundwater system, which then we drink. We use that to drink. So how we deal with stormwater, how we manage it, how we protect it, how we treat it is important to our everyday lives because we ultimately are drinking that. And then not just stopping there, we, we use the water. Again, we've made it dirty. We, we have a wastewater that we have to responsibly manage. That wastewater is then in turn returned back to our customers locally here for irrigation purposes. We have some industrial cooling applications and some industrial processing applications for treated water. Again, once that's finished being used, it goes back into the environment. Again, considering the whole cycle and the interrelationship, that very discharge could be connected to a source of other drinking water. So we've got to, we've got to do the right thing with our wastewater treatment processes. And ultimately, all of this is being embraced in our profession to say that you can't segregate it. They've been siloed for a long time. We treat, we handle and manage stormwater over here. We're going to take our drinking water here and our wastewater on the other side and, and never shall the three meet. Well, that's just not true. It's not practical to approach it that way. We have to integrate it and manage it well. What are the objectives? Well, they're pretty simple. We want reliable and resilient water utilities. We want to make sure that when our customers go to the faucet and open up the faucet, that there's water there for them to drink. And not only is it there, it's, it's of high quality, it's, it meets all the health and safety requirements. We want thriving communities in this objective. We want to make sure that stormwater is managed to the extent that we're treating it properly, we're holding it properly, we're not flooding neighborhoods, we're doing the right and responsible thing. We want competitive businesses and industries. We want sustainable agricultural systems. Again, making sure that that water is available for the community to use and certainly a healthy environment. The challenges. Demand for water supply due to growth is increasing. In, in our own county, our demand for drinking water increases by a million gallons per day every year. That's a pretty big number. If you look at our customer base from last year to this year, we grew our customer base by around 8,000 new homes. And that has been a trend over the last 10 years, really about 8,000, 7, 8,000 new homes every year. And so that grows the drinking water requirements. As you pull more water into the equation, the good, easy to find water becomes harder to find. So we, we really are on the threshold of maxing out on the natural resources. So we've got to be, we've got to manage the, the resource that we have smartly. Protecting the natural resources, making sure again that we're looking at stormwater protection, treating the stormwater effectively, looking at our water, our potable water sources, managing that properly so that it's all there for us into the future. And affordability. You know, it's a life sustaining measure. And we got to make sure that it's an affordable price. I mean, I've joked before, maybe not such a joke, but you compare your water bill to the other three life sustaining services in our lives, right? Cell phone, cable bill, and electric. You know, where does your water bill stack up to those other essential services? And I would guess probably it's either competitive or less than those other items. And yet we, we find ourselves really challenged with, my water bill's too high. And we get it, you know, we have a large population of fixed income residents. We've got a large population of residents that are challenged economically and it's a tough, it's tough paying the water bill. So we want to make sure ultimately that we're managing the resource properly and that it is affordable. We've just thrown this in here as a, as a, for instance, for the stormwater management side. And, and really, we're talking about low impact development. We're talking about creating opportunities to take our stormwater and effectively return it back to the, the nature cycle. And so whether that looks like bio swells, whether it looks like changed roadway features, we're going to be very supportive of that in the future because again, I think that's essential to managing one component of the water cycle. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Melissa.
Thank you, George. So George mentioned the holistic view of water, looking at how water is related. And we want to take that same holistic view when we look at the water resource language in our comprehensive plan. So what we've been working on with respect to our unincorporated county comprehensive plan language is we've been looking at all of the existing water resource language that's contained within the comprehensive plan. So not only those portions that are within the traditional element form, potable water, stormwater, our wastewater, sanitary sewer element, but also throughout the comprehensive plan, we have a number of other goals, objectives, and policies that pertain to water. So we're trying to capture all of that, synthesize it. We, we have it all categorized now. We have approximately, I just wrote it down, 367 goals, objectives, and policies that pertain in some way to water resources. So we want to make sure that we are looking at how all of that language relates and how it all functions across different elements. As part of this effort, we are also hoping to modernize and update our comprehensive plan language. Much of the unincorporated Hillsborough County plan is still within the old 9J5 model. So it's the traditional elements. And we want to use this as an opportunity to update our plan and make it serve as a framework for our partners in Hillsborough County so that they can start creating some of these innovative projects and continue creating projects that move the One Water concept forward. And we've also done some additional looking around the country at what other folks are doing. And we feel that this really has an opportunity to be innovative. This approach is a little different than a lot of folks look at their comprehensive plans. So we're very excited about that. And I also, before I move forward, also want to thank Diego Guerra on our staff, who's been very instrumental in helping to compile all of these hundreds of policies and, and pull them together. So we really appreciate his help. So you all have a One Water puzzle drop on your, on your chairs today, on the desks today. And those are our One Water anticipated outcomes. Those were developed collaboratively with our partners in public utilities, also water resources, public works, development services in the county. And we worked on those together over a series of many meetings to come up with some, some, some guiding principles really for what we hope to achieve. So there are three main areas that, that those fit into. We want to enhance coordination with other types of planning. So we want to make sure that water resources planning is carefully linked to transportation planning, land use planning, that it's not considered in a silo. We also want One Water to be able to serve as an innovator, to meet the needs of a growing community. So being able to be flexible and be nimble when there are changes in growth patterns, changes in weather patterns. We're hoping that this One Water approach to comprehensive planning will help us be more flexible and nimble. And then we also want to optimize capital investment. So if funds are expended in an area for infrastructure, for water resource infrastructure, wanting to make sure that utilization of that infrastructure is maximized so that we can make sure that we're getting a, a good return on investment. So wanted to provide a quick update of where we are in this project. Much of it has been internal thus far, so sharing where we've been. We've researched and looked at best practices from around the country. We've also, like I mentioned, the 367 policies, goals, objectives, and policies, identified and synthesized the existing water resource language from the unincorporated Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. Right now where we are in the process is we're vetting that existing language with our county partners. So we're looking at what can be moved forward, what needs to be modified or tweaked slightly? Is there anything that can be combined? Is there anything that's duplicative that we can combine or strengthen? And then once we get that existing language vetted, we'll be looking at different topic areas and opportunities to strengthen the comprehensive plan and also the, the One Water concept to make sure that the plan serves as a framework for this concept. Then we'll be holding a workshop with the BOCC. And then ultimately drafting proposed new language that of course will be subject to public and, and stakeholder input. So I did want to take an opportunity to talk a little bit about some of the innovative tools that our Planning Support Services team has developed for us as part of this process. And he's so good, he skipped. So we do have the One Water app, which is being pulled up, thank you. And what this shows is all of the different aspects of water that are interrelated and affect planning in the county. So you can see what we have pulled up right now. Our publicly owned parcels, greater than five acres, wellhead resource protection areas, and flood zones. With a thinking that this is a way to start thinking in a more integrated manner about water, thinking about the different relationships between different aspects of water and land use. And so as an example, if there was a lot, there were a lot of issues with flooding in an area, it would be very easy to pull up the publicly owned parcels. And maybe there are some recreation sites that can be utilized for stormwater attenuation. Maybe there are other ways that we can make sure that we're capitalizing on, on our existing infrastructure and what we're using. And so Lionel's driving around as examples. So we have a lot of other layers on here and this is available on our website. It's, it's available to, for you to play around with and, and start looking at. So wanted to give a sneak preview here today. And then if we could go back to the, can you go back to the slide before that? 12, thanks. So did want to talk a little bit about the other tool here, which was the, we call it CPUD internally. It's a pet name. It's a centralized internal project management system. It's actually an access database. But we have taken every single goal, objective, and policy that is in the unincorporated plan, want to say it's close to 2,000 in total, and put them into a database. And we're using this to really look at each goal, objective, and policy strategically. So the database has a number of tools where we can tag policies with different topic areas. We can compare the work that was done back in 2015 on a previous initiative with the comprehensive plan to what's adopted. We can do a cross-element search. So there's a lot of functionality and a lot of ways that this is helping us with our One Water project and then also work on the comprehensive plan. And with that, I think George and I, I forgot I'm supposed to skip, no. I got so used to Lionel. And with that, I think this concludes our presentation and George and I are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Wilman?
Great information, thank you so much. I was looking at the cover sheet for the, in the, in the package, the agenda package. It says that there's a newly created Environmental Services Division of Hillsborough County. If you could, George, maybe just share with us what the purpose and the mission of that is?
Yeah, absolutely. We're excited about that as well. So we've always had a core group of environmental engineers and environmental scientists, professionals in our Public Utilities Department. And so, you know, we're very used to tracking permits, permit compliance, doing our sample analysis because everything we touch is, is managed by a regulatory permit. And so we were recognizing some strengths there and looking across some of our other organizational lines and realizing that they could use that same kind of shoring up and support. So expanded the support role of our Environmental Services Group to really touch all the permitted activities across Mr. Merrill's administration. So we're doing stormwater now, we're doing some of the mining activities. We're tracking that and following that. Obviously water, wastewater, solid, solid waste, anything that has a regulatory permit, we follow that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Chris?
Is it overstepping in the comprehensive plan to somehow address all of the water that, dare I say, is wasted on watering turf? I don't know if there's a way, at least to dissuade that.
Well, I mean, I think that we, we do have policies that pertain to water conservation and policies that pertain to making sure that, you know, the resource is utilized for the right purpose. I'm not familiar with other comprehensive plans that look at watering turf. I would have to do some research on that, but I'm not familiar off the top of my head with, with comprehensive plans to get into that level of detail because sometimes that can be kind of a programmatic viewpoint.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Jus?
I would like to know just generally, great information by the way. And I think this, the One Water approach is definitely from an environmental resources standpoint, the way to go, the way we're going to need to go, whether or not we realize it yet soon here. But one question I have for you, being deeply familiar with our comprehensive plan and the conundrums it causes, is as you're taking this One Water approach, since we haven't done it in the past and things have been siloed, you necessarily have to be coming into the areas of contention where the different silos overlap each other. We haven't quite figured out what to do. You didn't talk about that a lot. You spoke extensively about, you know, the One Water thing and what we plan to do. I get the sense that we're updating our comprehensive plan based on this. How much focus are we putting on resolving the contentions that we're seeing coming up?
Sure, that's a great question. So one of the ways that we've tried to address that at the staff level is making sure that at every working group meeting, we have someone from different departments to, who are familiar with the different issues, who are familiar with what kind of unintended consequence, good intent may have in policy language. So that's been really important to us in this effort. We've had multiple folks from George's shop, from the public works side of things, and also people who work with the regulations every day. So folks who are looking at our land development code. So by building that cross-team as, from the ground up, from the beginning, and not developing the policies in a vacuum, I think that's really helped us start to identify some of the issues. And certainly as we move forward, there certainly will be areas where perhaps what works for one area doesn't work for another. But having that, that relationship and that cross-team collaboration, I think will really help us address those.
Very good. I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to Hillsborough County Physical Year 2025 Capital Improvement Program and CIE Schedule of Projects Update. Welcome.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This item is Hillsborough, is the Planning Commission's review of Hillsborough- This item is Hillsborough, is the Planning Commission's review of Hillsborough County's FY20 through FY25 Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Element Schedule of Projects Update. This is a, this is an action item and a resolution is provided for your vote. The review was conducted in accordance with Chapter 97, 351, which requires the Planning Commission to conduct a review of the CIP, of the county CIP annually. Chapter 163 of Florida statutes requires that the schedule of projects that addresses level of service and adopted in the comprehensive plan be, be updated annually as well and be replaced and, and would replace the existing CIE schedule with the schedule in your packets. The update is accomplished by ordinance, and as such, Planning Commission staff also reviewed the schedule of projects. The review also examined the CIP and the CIE schedule for consistency with, with Hillsborough County's comprehensive plan, as well as the plans of adjacent jurisdictions. Depicted on the screen is a summary of the CIP projects, which are placed into eight program categories. As you can see, the largest category, the largest groups in terms of funding are government facilities and transportation. The total funding amount for FY20 through FY25 is $1.67 billion for a total of 259 Planning Commission staff looked at the overall CIP and those projects identified by the county that address level of service, and identified that 82% of the funding is going towards 181 projects that address level of service. The first step in reviewing the CIP and the CIE schedule for consistency was to take a look at the projects identified by the county as address, as addressing level of service and see how the CIE schedule compared to those priorities outlined in the Capital Improvement Element. According to CIE Policy 1E2, funding should first be expended on projects that maintain level of service, eliminate, eliminate existing deficiencies before expanding funding on projects that serve future growth. As you can see, 91% of the funding is going towards projects that maintain level of service and eliminate deficiencies. Utilizing geospatial data, Planning Commission staff looked at all the projects which were analyzed using GIS to ensure consistency with related future land use element policies related to, or pertaining, I'm sorry, pertaining to the urban service area, and found that 92% of the funding is for projects within the urban service area. Projects in the rural area included replacements and renovation of existing facilities, parks and trails. However, none of these projects would encourage growth or sprawl in the rural area. Additionally, water and sewer lines are not planned in the rural area, which, which is supported by future land use element, Objective 1, Policies 1.1 and 4.7. Capital Improvement Element and Coastal Management Element objectives state that public expenditure for infrastructure and facilities in the coastal high hazard area should be minimized. With this in mind, utilizing GIS to analyze these projects with, to analyze the projects with available geospatial information, staff located 22 projects that are within the coastal high hazard area. These projects serve existing development, renovate, replace existing facilities, or enhance public access to natural areas. This would be considered minimal construction to, and ensures that county property and expenditure is not subject to unnecessary risk. Therefore, the CIP is consistent with the Capital Improvement Element and Coastal Management Element objectives governing the coastal high hazard area. In conclusion, staff, staff recommends that Planning Commission find the county administrators' recommended FY20 through FY25 CIP and CIE schedule consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of, of the future of Hillsborough, of the, excuse me, of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. Barring any questions, this concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Chris?
Diego, I don't know whether you'll be able to answer off the top of your head, but you mentioned maintaining level of service.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know which modes are considered in that? Is it just automobile traffic? Does it include?
No, it includes, the levels of service are included in the, the staff report packet at the, at the, at the end of the packet, includes transportation, parks, water.
And within transportation, does it just look at personal travel, you know, personal cars, or does it look at transit level of service, pedestrian level of service, bicycle level of service?
It looks at pedestrian level of service and transit level of service, ma'am.
Okay, that's a nice surprise, thank you.
Any other questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I will motion that we find the Hillsborough County Four-Year 20 through Four-Year 25 Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Element Schedule of Projects Update consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County.
Got a motion, we got a second? Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Joseph, second by Commissioner Moreno. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to item number seven, the City of Tampa Land Development Code text amendments.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. I will be presenting on the text amendments along with Danny Collins. I would just open by saying that we don't have a member of the City of Tampa here today. So any questions on the language specifically, we might have to discuss. I stand corrected, we do have a member here. These are part of the January 2019 cycle. This specific amendment was publicly initiated by Tampa City Council. It's about the small and large kennels. It removes the ratio of requiring one additional acre of land per animal over 10 animals. So before, if you had like 11 animals, there had to be an additional acre of land. That has been removed from this text amendment. They added a 10-foot setback between outdoor tanks, pools, and ponds for aquatic animals in this as well. The, some things that are remain unchanged are the setbacks to the runs, pens, and chicken coops, and then overnight stays for small kennels are still prohibited. And we did find this consistent, because it will continue to protect the residential neighborhoods from non-residential uses through those required setbacks. And our recommendation is to find that consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Someone like to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, forgot. Any public comment? Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we find, approve the attached resolution, find a proposed land development code text amendment language regarding kennel small, small and kennel large consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to Tampa City Council.
Okay, second, okay, Commissioner Moreno made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Joseph. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Danny Collins, and I'm with your Planning Commission staff. This is a land development code text amendment, and more specifically, it's for FEMA flood level changes in the definition. This is part of the January 2019 cycle, it's publicly initiated through the zoning administrator and legal department. The request is to amend and clarify the existing definition of height as it relates to FEMA flood maps and finished floor levels. Currently, height is measured from the mean elevation and proposed grade at the front of the structure. As proposed, height will be measured from the required finished floor drive from applications of local, state, and federal requirements. The proposed amendment is due depending changes in the FEMA flood maps and the required finished floor levels. Staff found this consistent, as it would continue to ensure that all new structures meet or exceed the flood-resistant construction requirements of the Florida Building Code and federal flood, plane management regulations, and that CM Objective 1.3. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed land development code text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Someone like to make a motion? Oh, public comment, I apologize.
Public comment.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? I think I'm trying to speed this up. Any public comment on this item? No public comment?
Yeah, I move that we find the proposed land development code text amendment language regarding the pending FEMA flood maps and the required finished floor levels consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to Tampa City Council.
Okay, thank you. We have a second? Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Willman, second by Commissioner Moreno. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to 7C.
Your last Tampa Land Development Code text amendment, Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. This is a cleanup of an internal reference. It's also part of the January 2019 cycle. It was also publicly initiated by the zoning administrator and the legal department. Section 14, 151 now refers to Chapter 14. It's a strike and an underline, just referring to the new chapter. We did find this consistent, because the comprehensive plan does seek to continue to refine the land development code and ensure it is correct for the members and the public. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Someone like to make a motion? Motion by Commissioner Joseph, we have a second? Second by Commissioner Moreno, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We are going to move on to the item eight, Presentation of 2018 through 2023 Plan Hillsborough Strategic Plan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. I can sense that the Chair wants us to move this item along quickly, so we will try to get through it as quickly as possible. There is a lot of information to share, we have a lot of work that we've been doing over the past year, but I will try to be as concise as possible. This is an implementation status update of our 2018 through 2023 Plan Hillsborough Strategic Plan. This is an annual update. If you all remember, last year at this time, we adopted this strategic plan here. And this is a comprehensive but concise report on what we've been doing to ensure its implementation over the past year. Little bit of background, I'll go through quickly. This was developed jointly by the three boards that serve Plan Hillsborough. It's the first time we've had a strategic plan that did that. Again, adopted by the Planning Commission last year at this time. And it focuses on our near-term strategic objectives. So what should we be looking for and looking to accomplish within the next three to five years? Of course, you all had input on our seven strategic priorities. These encompass a lot of the broad work that Plan Hillsborough does and encompass many different facets of our organization. We also have both external and internal strategic priorities. So linking land use and transportation, which is of course a major component of what we do here at Plan Hillsborough, recognizing the interrelationships between transportation and land use. We have had a number of different projects, some of them you've heard about today, over the past year, that have worked to link land use and mobility options. Some examples are the East Fowler Land Use Study, our work supporting HART and the City of Tampa in their TOD grant, and also work on the Plant City Mixed-Use Gateway. We have also taken a proactive approach to plan amendments. So not waiting for the, the private sector to come forward with an amendment to make a change, but really trying to be proactive in how we're looking at our comprehensive plan and looking at items. We have also worked to enhance our coordination with our economic development and real estate experts. So we've done things like incorporated the real estate market analysis into the 2045 study that was done by the MPO and Planning Commission. Also have economic development staff regularly in attendance with our land use staff as they review amendments. Some other ways that we've looked at linking land use and transportation is we did have a cross-team collaboration, looking at our local government technical manuals. We recently went through a review of the unincorporated Hillsborough Technical Manual, Hillsborough County's Technical Manual, and provided a lot of great technical assistance comments related to facets ranging from transportation to stormwater. So that was a great opportunity to try to shape that effort. We've also been working with our partners in Hillsborough County on updating their corridor preservation maps, linking their community, linking our community plans that are adopted in the comprehensive plan with the corridor preservation efforts. And I should say Katrina Corcoran, who is here, has been very instrumental in that, and she's also been very instrumental in pulling together all this information for our strategic plan. Garden Steps is another project that has linked land use and transportation. This is something we're really proud of. It's gotten nationwide recognition in the Healthiest Cities and Counties Challenge. So that's a great project that looks at creating community gardens with, with easy bicycle and pedestrian access in areas where there are identified food deserts. And then, of course, you heard quite a bit about the FSU Shared Mobility Project as well. Planning partnerships, the strategic priority here was to enhance our existing relationships while developing new opportunities for collaboration. Again, a number of partner projects that we've been working on, some that you've heard about today. Others include our ongoing work on Vision Zero, the Commuter Challenge with the Downtown Partnership and the City of Tampa, and a number of other initiatives that work with local governments, and also moving beyond local governments to look at other opportunities for partnership. We're also working to enhance the service projects that we conduct in our communities, so looking for new areas where we can, where we haven't previously completed service projects. So some examples of some recent service is with the Box City, excuse me, is with Box City with the Tampa Heights Junior Civic Association. If you're not familiar with Box City, it is a wonderful, fantastic way to teach children and youth about planning. So we had a great partnership with them in that project. We, again, are focusing on innovative partnership opportunities, so with neighborhood associations, the school district, with universities, also with professional organizations. That's one of the ways that we're working to achieve this strategic priority. And then finally, we've really had an internal emphasis on relationship building. This includes a number of different facets, but it really has impacted a great deal of what we do here internally. So we've had succession planning for existing liaisons, those folks who are getting ready to retire, having someone come with them to train and get to meet and know people in those communities. We've also had a number of wonderful internal training initiatives on partnerships and community engagement. So we've been able to hear from our senior-level staff who have really great partnerships and sharing that information with others internally on how to do that effectively. So citizen engagement, speaking of, is our next strategic priority, and this is really trying to enhance the way that we engage with the community, ensure there's an opportunity for feedback from diverse perspectives, and using technology as part of that objective. So there have been a number of opportunities for community engagement over the past year. Of course, the, the traffic calming and mural painting with Vision Zero, presentations related to that. With the Ruskin Community Character Study, we're just kicking that off, but we're looking at some of the community data and partnerships as a potential precursor to updating the community plan. And then in Ebor, there's also been extensive outreach in, in Ebor as well. We have also increased our social media impact. We are growing our followers, currently have 11 point, 11,600 followers on Twitter and growing, 2,800 on Facebook and growing. And then we had record participation for our It's Time Tampa Bay Outreach and hit approximately 5,000 responses for our It's Time Hillsborough Outreach. There's been a lot of success using those new technologies to reach people that maybe would be a little more difficult to reach going out into the community. And then finally, we're also expanding our outreach team for an even greater impact, restructuring the organization a little bit to try to have more folks to support additional outreach and engagement efforts across Plan Hillsborough. So we, we don't just want to think about Hillsborough County as well, we want to think beyond our jurisdictional boundaries. So we've had a lot of opportunities for regional collaboration this past year. One of them is, as One of them is, as part of the LRTP updates, was a regional workshop with all of the MPOs in the region to look at potential environmental mitigation strategies as part of the LRTP updates. That was also a meeting with all of the regulatory agencies and regulatory folks who would be involved in that. We've also had a great collaborative information sharing program with Pinellas County. They are also beginning to look at updating their comprehensive plans. So we've had a great open dialogue about what approaches are they trying, what's working across the bay. So we're trying to see what aspects we can borrow and learn from one another. We also did that with Forward Pinellas as well, to see what they're working on and what sort of projects have success over there. And then we also have staff significantly supporting regional planning efforts. Both the MPO staff and Planning Commission staff and our River Board staff work on a number of regional initiatives and are part of a number of regional committees. And technology and innovation. I mentioned CPUD earlier. So we have this wonderful access database that we use for our comp plan update. We are also having discussions underway to obtain streetlight data. And that is really interesting. It's anonymous location data for mobile phones to measure population mobility patterns. It's used for origin destination analyses. So that's something that we're in discussions with. And then we've also had a number of internal agency enhancements where we've really been working to integrate technology into every aspect of our work here at Plan Hillsborough. So there's a tool of the month presentations at all of our staff meetings. We also have incorporated technology into our onboarding process so that as folks are coming on board and they're new to Plan Hillsborough, they also get a lesson on all the tools that we have available and what they can be used for. And then we've also had some internal discussions about ways to make our GIS and website more user-friendly. One example of that is the One Water app that you saw earlier. We're trying new innovative approaches to technology and seeing what might work best for conveying that planning information. And enabling transportation choices. Of course, that means making sure there's a variety of choices available for folks to get around and enhance mobility. So we are looking at a wide variety of future projects as part of the LRTP. Currently looking at the assessment and cost feasible projects. We also have staff who are monitoring local government sidewalk waivers. So if there are a number of waivers that are occurring in a particular jurisdiction, we have people who are tracking when sidewalks do not get built. And then we also have had some success in some of the Vision Zero, excuse me, some of the Vision Zero Action Plan implementation strategies. One of those is F dot funding on high-crash corridors. And then we'll wrap up concisely with internal agency enhancements. There have been a number of things that we've initiated internally at Plan Hillsborough to try to enhance the work that we do and make us more effective in our work. And one of those is we have had an effort on reducing internal silos. So every project has a cross-team project kickoff where we make sure we include people from every team at the kickoff. And we're not just thinking about planners because we want to know what it looks like to someone who's not a planner. So we also make sure we include people who are on our administrative staff, on our technology staff, so that we have an understanding of what projects may look like to folks who are not in the weeds in planning as much. And we also have cross-team liaisons. We've had great success with having Planning Commission staff sit in on MPO staff meetings and vice versa, and also across teams. So that's provided a really good cross-pollination, cross-information sharing. We had a great panel on private sector perspectives on project management. So to try to understand the external perspective and a lot of our clients, or excuse me, a lot of folks who have us as clients, we're trying to look at that. We are also working on an ongoing institutional knowledge and leadership development training for our employees who have been here a long time and getting ready to retire. We didn't want all of that knowledge to go with them. So we're having ongoing training from them and then also general leadership and development training. So that's been a great resource internally as well. And then finally, we have instituted post-conference information sharing. So everyone who has been to a conference or is going to a conference also has the responsibility to come back and share what they've learned and give a presentation to staff. So that's been very helpful in sharing information, sharing best practices, making sure we're staying current. It's been very successful at that. And that concludes the overview of today's presentation. I did want to say there will be a written component that will be part of the annual report that you all receive in February. A lot of the information was similar, so we didn't want it to be duplicative. But you will receive more detailed written information as part of that report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? No questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number nine, the Hillsborough County Briefings.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Janika Mills, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to introduce to you Mr. Israel Monsanto and Mr. Mike Stevenson from the Hillsborough County Development Services staff, who will review with you today five proposed publicly-initiated Land Development Code text amendments for the second round of 2019 code amendments. There is no action required on your part today. These text amendments will be back before you at a public hearing October 14th. And then action will be required on your part at that time. The email that I placed before you is from a citizen. We received it late this afternoon, but he wanted to make sure his comments were put before you and taken into consideration for microbreweries, the microbrewery Land Development Text Code Amendment. Okay? And without further ado, I'm going to introduce Mr. Israel Monsanto, who will review the Land Development Code amendments.
Good afternoon, Israel Monsanto Development Services. As Janika Mills stated, we have five scheduled text amendments for round two, and these are all initiated by Hillsborough County. In front of you, you have the upcoming schedule for public hearings. The first one will be in September 26th, and the second one will be on October 24th. The five text amendments that we have, the first one will be presented by Mike Stevenson from Public Utilities. I'll be presenting the rest, the microbreweries, car wash facilities, accessory dwellings, and the mobile home parks and recreational vehicle parks text amendment. With that, we'll leave you with Mike Stevenson.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Stevenson, and I'm here to discuss revisions in the phosphate mining section of the Land Development Code. And it's kind of pretty much mundane compared to all the presentations you've had already. Some of it's just simple typos. Thank you. And, yikes, all these pens. And like I said, some are just simple typos. Thank you. Like M2S is actually M squared, you know, things like that. And then there's, there's changes in the certification of reclamation. That, you know, when this development code section first was devised, it was all, we've got a mine, we've got a mine that really wasn't that much in interest in the reclamation part. Because, yeah, we'll do that in the future. Well, the future's here now, so we had to better define what was reclamation and how to get the release of obligation. And also, since this code was, or this section of the code was first developed, you know, over 20 years ago, we've changed things like the permittee was required to submit 16 copies of each application. Now, where you can say, we're inserting that to say electronic copies. And the big thing is the financial responsibility. Back in, whenever the code was developed over 20 years ago, the financial responsibility was set at $4,000 an acre for reclamation. That was in case if something happened with the company, the county would have some type of bonding mechanism where they could go and finish the work. But over the years, 4,000 acre, you know, it never had changed in 20-plus years. So we're trying, we want to tie it in with a construction cost index now. So, you know, the costs will fluctuate up and down as associated with this construction cost index as published by the Engineering News Record. And, you know, by the mining company's own admittance, their reclamation cost over the last two years was over $6,000 an acre. And we're, you know, they, on their own, moved forward with the bonding for 6,000 acre, but we need to get the code more in line, just like with the electronic applications. And I'm here for any questions.
No questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, again, Israel Monsanto Development Services. I will move on to the next text amendment. This one is a revision to Land Development Code, section 61100, and also the definitions in our Land Development Code. And the purpose of this amendment is to add standards for microbreweries and brew pubs. And this is to accommodate the emergence of new, small-scale microbreweries in the county. This establishment will be regulated by production limits. Current restrictions on wholesale distribution will remain in place. In essence, today we have brew on premises, but we don't define that in the code. What we're going to attempt to do is to also create a definition for the brew pubs, the microbrewery, differentiate those. Distribution will be subject or limited to the commercial zoning districts, but the commercial neighborhood will not be permitted as it is today. We don't allow distribution in the neighborhood commercial zoning districts. The next amendment, 1054, will revise and clarify the car wash use in commercial neighborhood zoning districts. This amendment will clarify that fully automated car washes would fall within the definition of the Land Development Code for self-serve car washes. And therefore, also, we allow in commercial neighborhood zoning districts. Today, we have some fully automated car washes that are operated wholly by the customer. So we're going to incorporate those type of car wash facilities also to be a self-serve and also allowed in commercial neighborhood zoning districts. The next text amendment is 191055. The purpose of this amendment is to clarify the accessory dwelling provision of the Land Development Code. The code today requires a minimum lot size to be 7,000 square feet to allow an accessory dwelling. The residential single-family conventional nine, or RSC9, permits, doesn't permit accessory dwelling because the lot size is less than 7,000. So what we are trying to do with this amendment is that there are some instances that you are zone RSC9, but you have a lot that is larger than 7,000 square foot lot. So we're going to regulate accessory dwelling provision by the minimum lot size, which is 7,000 today, and then we'll amend the table of allowable uses to be permitted in the RSC9 as long as you have a 7,000 or larger square foot lot. Also, we are going to allow the, by this amendment, we will hope to allow legal non-conforming lots to be also permitted to develop an accessory dwelling, which is not today. Lastly, the text amendment 191218 will modify the density provision for recreational vehicle parks. The code today provides for density increases for proposed RV parks depending on the future land use designation and then also the classification on the roads. And this higher density would be either up to six dwelling units per acre or 12 dwelling units per acre. So with this text amendment, we're going to limit or restrict that. You can only get those density increases if you are either within the urban service area or you are served by public water or sewer. And with that, I'm done with my presentation. I'm going to leave you with any questions.
Okay, any questions from anyone? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When does this, like, come back to us? Because I don't think we have enough time for me to answer all of my questions. So is this going to come back to us for, like, final approvals? Or maybe I can just, you know, like, send some questions beforehand and not take up, like, 20, 30 minutes here?
Yes, it'll be back at the October regular meeting. So if you wanted to send us the questions, we could get them to Development Services and get back answers and even have time for there to be a meeting or briefing with you in the interim.
All right, because I have several issues with some things, so I'd, okay. I'll just handle it then. Thanks.
Commissioner Moreno?
I, I don't know if Commissioner Powell and I are on the same page. I mean, I wanted to concur with the, regarding the craft breweries, the email that the gentleman sent in. And then, just to, I guess, just to be clear, this would be for, this would be for breweries that are in unincorporated Hillsborough County. If you're in the city of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, you're not covered. But, so then my next question is, and maybe this is just how I'm reading it, but looking at the definitions, it would seem as if, if you have a microbrewery, you're prohibited from having a brew pub. Or you will be, that by, if you establish your location and you decide, okay, well, we want to have a kitchen, which essentially, then, you know, it was marked as a brew pub, then now you're in conflict with your definition of a microbrewery. Is that just, am I reading it wrong? Or, because I think if I'm reading it wrong, then I'm reading it wrong. But if not, then that part needs to be cleaned up because there are, a lot of the breweries are starting to move towards having kitchens because a lot of times they're in industrial areas, as noted in the proposed language. They're in industrial or commercial areas because they need size and it's manufacturing, large-scale manufacturing in some cases. So they're putting in these kitchens or restaurants, essentially, these brew pubs, because people want to be able to eat while they're at the brewery. But if you, to me, reading this, it seems as if, well, you're either a microbrewery or brew pub, you can't be both. Am I wrong? If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, that's fine.
Right, and that's not, that's not the intent, because yes, we understand your question. If you, if you will have a microbrewery, yes, you will have the ability to have that kitchen or serving area for your patron. So that's not the intent. We're basically in the draft process, and we are in the cleanup process also as well. So we're getting all the inputs, and that's one of the inputs that we already got. And we're going to be updating, and you will see the updates on that very soon. So, but no, the intent is not to restrict here or there. No, we recognize that, and we're going to amend that accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Because as I'm sitting here, I looked at one particular brewery that I thought would be in conflict with this, and they don't meet that cap yet. But, I mean, that, the, there's a difference between, like, hops, which is used to your brew pub, you know, there wasn't one, Dale Mavory, it's gone, long gone, and something like a large brewer that is doing stuff and decides to add a kitchen. So that, I understand, but that, in addition to the comments made by the gentleman, there's a lot of breweries, we want to make sure we're supporting them since it's a growing industry.
No, and that's a valid comment from the citizen and also from you because we recognize that we're dealing with something that we didn't have any definition in the code. And we're looking at examples around us, and also we're going to incorporate what they are doing right now and then put it in our new regulations. And we want to be as, you know, open and flexible. But still, we need to make sure that we're not in conflict with other areas in the code, so we make sure of that.
Just, sorry, just one more file, and I'll be done. In writing, in writing this portion, did you reach out to industry experts? Or was it more just seeing what's happening in other counties and trying to match up to have some sort of standardization between counties and state definitions?
Actually, we've done both. We met with industry experts and current owners. And they, we actually had an outreach meeting. They came in, we met with them. They actually found the initial draft acceptable. They brought up those, some of those issues, and that's why we're now responding to them. And also, again, we looked at other areas. So we say, we're taking advice from different sides, so we're going to put all those in there.
I agree.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Cruss? Commissioner Cruss?
Well, for research purposes, I think we should probably do a microbrewery tour for the planning commission. My question was about the accessory dwelling units. I think that makes a lot of sense, especially with the affordable housing crisis. And I just wondered where the 7,000 square foot lot size came from? Is that what it was before? Is that?
That's a good question. I believe it may come, may come, may have come in part because of the, the size, and then also, you have to also take into account lot coverage setbacks. Once you get smaller than 7,000, your setbacks are smaller on the sides, on the front, and for accessory dwellings, the current regulation, which is not going to change in this, with this amendment, is that you still have to meet principal building setbacks. So anything that gets smaller than 7,000 square foot lot, you have more restrictive setbacks. You have, well, you have a smaller setback, but then you have your lot coverage also changing. So probably that's where it came from, but we, I can't be 100% sure.
Yeah, just, I guess I would just like the assurance that that's a number that you thought about and maybe you know what the cities within the county, what theirs are and as a comparison. So, just, I would encourage you to, to look into that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dix?
Thank you very much. Real quick, as a follow-up to what Commissioner Cruss was talking about with the accessory dwelling, in the second page, in paragraph H, it talks about any detached structure that does not meet the requirements for an accessory dwelling will not be utilized for independent living quarters or sleeping quarters. Now, I don't see anywhere in this language what those requirements for an accessory dwelling are. I presume they're in the, the rest of the, of the section? Because I presume, I, just total presumption here, but are you trying to prohibit, you know, somebody saying, oh yeah, I can rent that utility shed out back or something like that?
Correct. We have a different section that regulates accessory structures, which is your shed, storage, probably a detached garage. So that's what that language is making sure that you don't, you don't conflict with that other section of the code.
All right, so there is language that will define what requirements the accessory dwelling has to make. All right, great, thanks.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number 10, the City Plant City Plan Amendment Briefing.
Good afternoon, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. Our staff has been processing three plan amendments for the City of Plant City for an anticipated public hearing in September. There were no plan amendments submitted for the City of Temple Terrace, so there will be just these three come September. The first one is in the northeast part of the Plant City. General location is east of North Wilder Road, north of Interstate 4, west of Charlie Taylor Road, and south of Dan Kendrick Road, and it is PCCPA 1903. This shows you a little bit closer in of the plan amendment site. It's encircled by the lavender dash line directly to the west of that is the Colonial Village subdivision, and west of that is Stingray Chevrolet. Stingray Chevrolet is the applicant for this plan amendment. To the north and east are undeveloped properties, and to the south is Interstate 4. I did want to share with you briefly the annexation. Typically, I do not do this, but this one is of particular interest. This was a map that was supplied by the City of Plant City. The jurisdiction, the Plant City is shaded in light yellow. Unincorporated County is not shaded. The plan amendment site, or actually, I should say, the annexation site is the dark yellow surrounded by the red line. This is shown by the cursor, this is the plan amendment site. This is another area that's voluntarily coming in that is going to be the subject of a subsequent plan amendment in a future cycle. This property where my cursor is right now did not want to be part of this voluntary annexation, which would create an enclave. So the city has actually chosen to contract its boundaries, and this property owner highlighted in blue is voluntarily deannexing from the city, and will become part of unincorporated accounting once again. I did discuss this with Plant City staff, and some of the staff has tenures of over 30 years, and to their knowledge, this is the first time this has occurred in, in that length of time, so it is a rather rare occurrence. By way of a little bit of a background, this was privately initiated. I already talked in depth about the annexation. It's more than 10 acres at 15.4, so it will be sent to DEO for their review at the appropriate time. Its current land use is Hillsborough County Residential 1 and Residential 2, and this applicant has requested for Plant City Commercial. This shows you the land use plan as it is today. You can see the olive green color of the Hillsborough County Residential 2 and the light green of Residential 1. And of course, you can, with, if this was approved by City Commission, this would transition into the red for Plant City Commercial, similar to what you see on the western side of the interchange of Park and Interstate 4. What are the potential impacts? Currently, it would be allowed to have in the county 22 dwelling units and could be considered for up to 120,000, 112,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial uses. This would change to 49 dwelling units and 234,000 square feet of general and highway commercial uses. And with that, I would just entertain any questions you may have.
Commissioner Dix?
Just one, Mark, I would never second-guess you. You do such an outstanding job. But you sure you or nobody could, could convince this gentleman or family of the benefits of coming into the city?
I can let you know that the applicant and the applicant's agent spoke with them for quite a lengthy period of time. This actually, there was been entertainment for almost two years. And we actually, the city supplied a lot of information to the property owner about the benefits of annexing into Plant City, and at this time, they did not have an interest in doing so. But I assure you that there was a great deal of effort, both on city staff part and the applicant's part.
Yeah, thanks.
And the applicant agent will be here at the public hearing, and if you would like to ask him some of those efforts, I'm sure he'd be happy to share those with you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Roman?
Thanks, Mark. Is there, is the annexation pending the contingent upon the future land use approval? I'm just curious what would happen if?
My understanding is the city's intent is to have both of these items acted upon at the same public hearing. So that is their goal, is to tie these up, both when the plan amendment is ready to be acted upon by City Commission along with the annexation. The annexation would have to be, be completed first.
And the deannexation?
And the deannexation, yes. Mm-hmm. Yes, that's being, that's being handled as one, one, one process, the annexation and deannexation.
But the deannexation is only, I would think it would be tied to the annexation approval?
It is.
So wouldn't be, if, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Since we're moving into uncharted waters, what happens if the county refuses to accept the deannexation of the property?
My understanding is this is being headed up by the City of Plant City's attorney and the county's attorney's office, and they are in agreement of this and moving forward. So obviously, it has to go through that process, but my understanding of that, that has been coordinated.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for those questions. It is a rare occurrence, I can understand your curiosity. The next one is on, along the industrial corridor of County Line Road, west of South County Line Road, north of Rice Road, east of South Wiggins Road. It's PCCPA 1904. This shows you the area that is affected by this plan amendment. It actually annexed in in 2016, but has not gone through the land use change process. This aerial, even though it's somewhat new, there's been a lot of changes out there, and I'm going to go out there to take a lot of photos to show you how this area's changed, particularly with the industrial development, both to the east, south, and west. It is privately initiated. I've already mentioned, this has already completed the annexation process. It's coming in at 26 acres. It has Hillsborough County Residential 1, the Plant City Industrial, and I-4 Tech Corridor overlay. This shows you the land use as it is today, the white for it being transitional. It does have a, would, but prior to that, have Hillsborough County Residential 1. You can see the industrial area around it in Plant City, and the hash line interface indicates the I-4 Tech Corridor overlay. And this shows you how the map amendment would change if approved by the City Commission. What are the potential impacts? It's 26 dwelling units today. It has no opportunity for any non-residential development because it does not meet locational criteria. The reverse would be true if this was approved. There would be no residential entitlements, but this would have a lot, almost 570,000 square feet of industrial uses would be allowed. If you have any, I stand for any questions, I just wanted to note that this is Rice Road. The north part of the road is the plan amendment site, and it shows you some of the development that's occurring on the south side of Rice Road as, as we speak.
Okay, any questions? Okay, no questions, thank you.
The last plan amendment may be a little bit of deja vu. It's similar to 1807 and 1901 that you dealt with last cycle. It's west of North Wilder Road, north of Sam Allen Road, east of Paul Buckman Highway, and south of East Newsome Road. It's PCCPA 1905. It's associated with the North, North Park Isles residential development that's being worked on as we speak. In particular, the application is to take in another 30 acres from unincorporated county and areas that they already controlled that has a Plant City Residential 4 land use. They would like to match the other land uses that are in the area that have Residential 6. I will note, just adjacent to this property in that last cycle, this was PCCPA 1807, which I'm showing you by the cursor, and that was found by the Planning Commission to be consistent with their conference of plan, and it's expected to be acted on by their City Commission on September 23rd. Again, privately initiated, 23 acres is pending annexation. It's a total of 86.13 acres. The current land use is Hillsborough County Residential 1, Plant City Residential 4, and Natural Preservation, and they've requested Plant City Residential 6. This shows you the map as it is today. You see the tan color of Residential 4 in Plant City and the light green, which is Residential 1, and the dark yellow, which is the Residential 6 in Plant City. If this was approved by the Plant City Commission, it would change the colors to match the remainder of North Park Isles. Currently has entitlements of 273 dwelling units. This would increase to 516 dwelling units under either circumstance. It does not meet the locational criteria for non-residential development. This slide just shows you how each of the plan amendments are approximate location to each other. We are going to be here with you on September 9th for the public hearing and for the Planning Commission will be, and this will be heard by the Plant City Planning Board on September 25th at 8:30 in the morning at City Hall. And the transmittal hearing, which I alluded to earlier, is October 28th, again, at City Hall at 7:30 PM in the evening. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from commissioners? No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our Executive Director's Report.
Good afternoon, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. At your seats, you have my Executive Director's Report. It's longer because it's been two months. The couple of highlights, we have taken the opportunity over the last few months to meet with each of the cities. Their city manager, Mark and I went out and met with Plant City and Temple Terrace, make sure that the work we're providing them is meeting their needs and see if there's anything else up on the horizon that they'd like our assistance with. We also did that with the City of Tampa with Tom Snelling. Beth Alden and I have been conducting meetings with a number of the members of our legislative delegation. There are a lot of new members on the delegation, letting them know who we are. Also, in particular, the MPO has been trying to move forward the regional priority of advancing funds for the West Shore Interchange Reconstruction, and that's the region's number-one transportation priority with the state. So getting some help from the local delegation on that issue would be great. Let's see, we've had a number of briefings with the county on different land use issues that have been coming up, and some of those have resulted in them asking us to work on some, you heard Melissa Dickens mentioned, a community profile for Ruskin. They've also asked us to do something similar for Gibsonton and Wy Mama to basically start the process that would lead to updating those community plans in the comprehensive plan. South County is just feeling a lot of pressure from all of the growth that's coming there, and they're certainly, now, those community plans are at least 10 years old. It's worth looking at them and going back at their, and engaging with the community. So we're going to be working on that work. And in the coming months, you will pro, you'll probably be seeing us bring forward information about perhaps working with some consultants to assist us with that work as well. Wanted to let you know that the MPO will be supporting the Independent Oversight Committee related to the sales tax. While the sales tax is pending, it's been appealed again. The, it still is the law of the land, and the county attorney's office has recommended to the MPO that they go ahead and hold the first Independent Oversight Committee meetings so that, should that sales tax be upheld, that, that, they will, they will be able to move forward with projects in the next calendar year. Each of the four, four local governments in HART would be able to move forward with those projects. So that will be occurring later this month. We've been working very closely with HART on some of their projects related to transit and TOD. They have awarded a contract to look at a BRT along Florida, Nebraska, and Fowler. And then, they were, HART is the recipient of an $800,000 federal grant to look at transit-oriented development, and we have committed to be part of the match on that grant in terms of providing staff time to that, as is the City of Tampa. So we're working with them on looking at how transit, our transit-oriented development policies would be applied along, first, the extension of the streetcar into Tampa Heights, and then further along this Bus Rapid Transit route. I believe HART has just issued their RFP for that work to secure a consultant later this fall. We also are working with the MPO. We've been talking with Professor Hayfen out of the University of South Florida's Urban and Regional Planning Department about doing an independent study, looking at updating research and exploring options for value capture and public-private partnerships as it relates to different forms of mobility options, and particularly looking at are there ways along some of these stations to capture some of the value that's created when we have transit-oriented development, and then put that back into more improvements that are needed to support those areas. And so that would be, we would be providing under $10,000, I think it's like $8,500, to Professor Hayfen to conduct that research. We also have been talking with the Urban Land Institute, Tampa Bay. They received a grant to have some deep dive conversations on the topic of transit-oriented development with some of their development stakeholders, and so we've been looking at how we can bring that together with the work with HART and make sure those are complementing each other. And then lastly, because there's been a lot of stuff on this topic, the Tampa Bay Partnership engaged USF in doing a transit-oriented development study related to the Regional Transit Feasibility Plan, which you all had some workshops on last year. And so Taryn Sabia of, from USF will be coming, I believe in September, to give a presentation of the work that they did. And you can kind of see how she started to flesh out some of the ideas, though Professor Green had some good drawings. She kind of took it to the next level. Let's see. Also, at your seats, you'll see an update for, on City of Tampa Plan Amendments that were heard. Since you all took your action, you can see how the city ultimately ruled on those findings. And then lastly, hopefully, we'll have time to have a brief discussion with you all as part of the workshop on our transition from civil service. So if you all don't mind getting your food and going into Plant Hillsborough Room, we'll hopefully be, it should be a short conversation before our public hearing at 5:30. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Melissa? Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to other business, chair's business, I don't have anything. Is there any old business? Any new business? Any committee reports? Okay, no committee reports. We do have a workshop following this meeting, so this meeting's adjourned. Thanks. Thanks.